Twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen. Uh, city manager, report on closed session.
I don't believe there's any action to report.
There is, was no action I could think of. Okay. Um, open session called order.
Councilmember Martin?
Here.
Councilmember Vodderlos?
Here.
Councilmember DeGree?
Present.
Mayor Protam Keener?
Here.
Mayor O'Neil?
Here. Salute to the flag led by councilmember Martin.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, God, and this world with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Um, next, uh, there are no special presentations today. Next is the consent calendar. Any person wishing to address the council on any consent calendar item may do so at this time. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes. Those wishing to address the council on any item listed on the agenda shall submit a speaker card to the city clerk. Items on the consent calendar will be adopted by one motion unless a council member or person in the attendance, in the audience, sorry, requests before the vote on the motion to have an item discussed. Time limit on comments is three minutes or less. And I don't have any cards from the public. Is there?
Yeah.
I don't, for public comment, for consent calendar. Is there someone out there for this consent? Okay, I have no cards. Councilmember?
Were we going to talk about the agenda?
That's...
Next?
That's...
Somebody has a question. What do you need?
The, yeah, if you want it, yeah, there you can do it.
Okay, so I'd like to propose that we rearrange the agenda a little bit this evening, that we move the budget to the end, the last item, and that we continue the two annual reports to May twenty-second.
Second.
Okay, that's, we have a motion seconded in. Stu Vodderlos?
Second, Sue DeGree.
Okay. So, any comments? Vote? Okay, that motion passes five-zero, so we will not be having the two, the Parks, Beach and Recreation and the Open Space and Parkland Committee annual reports will not be done tonight. And the general fund present, budget, presentation item seven has been moved to the last item on the agenda. So, the consideration items tonight will be the ballot measure to authorize construction of additional thorough lanes on Highway One, or the adoption of an interim ordinance of the city council, and then we're going to talk about the general fund budget. Okay, so do we have a motion for the consent calendar?
Yeah. Motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, so any comments? Vote? Okay, the consent calendar was voted five-zero. That motion is passed. Next is oral communication. This portion of the agenda is available for the public to address...
I wanted to pick item number seven on consideration. Put a card in.
But we haven't gotten to item seven yet. We haven't gotten to item seven yet. Okay. This portion of the agenda is available for the public to address the city council on any issue that is not on the agenda. Any person wishing to address the council shall be recognized by the mayor during oral communications, provided however that during the oral communications portion of the agenda, only items not on the agenda for that meeting may be addressed. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. Council members shall not enter into debate with speakers under oral communications. A maximum time of three minutes will be allowed for any speaker pursuant to Pacifica Municipal Code Title II, Chapter One, Section Two dash one point one-one-eight. Any person making impertinent, slanderous, or profane remarks who become, or who becomes boisterous while addressing the council shall be called to order by the presiding officer, and if such conduct continues, may, at the discretion of the presiding officer, be ordered barred from further audience before the council during that meeting. So I do have some oral communication cards, and that is for items not on the agenda. So I have...
That's number nine.
Oh, number nine, okay. So, Chaya Gordon, if you can, I'm going to call out three names, and then if you can, line up behind the speaker. So Chaya Gordon, Jeff Lamont, yeah, okay, Lamont's over here, and Deborah Gold.
Yes? Start?
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I would just like to urge you to consider going through whatever procedure you need to, to make modifications to the way these meetings are run. And I'm specifically referring to time limits for speakers. Tonight is not an exception. There's often a huge number of people who show up and want to speak. I understand there are probably some nights when that doesn't happen. But I don't think that it serves anyone's purpose, and I don't think that it's a good process, to have an unlimited number of people. I understand the intent. I believe that the city wants to be as fair and democratic as possible. But I don't think it serves that purpose to have a three-minute time limit. It should be less when there's so many people, and when you don't have a meeting end time. So I would urge you to consider putting in a rule for yourselves that has a cutoff to a meeting, the meeting ending time, and that also proposes, I don't, I don't know, I'm not an expert in this, but something like, based on how many people there are, maybe limit the time. I think that all speakers tonight should be limited to two minutes. That would be my suggestion. Or else we will once again wind up here very, very late, and that must be really hard for all of you on the council, and for all of you who are city staff, and I know it's hard for the people from the public who have come here. So, um, I really urge you to take this to heart and consider what you can do to make these meetings. Um, I think that would be more democratic and more successful. When you have to make decisions at midnight, I don't think those are particularly going to be the best decisions that you could make. Thank you very much.
Jeff Lamont, Deborah Gold, and then Tree Stier.
Councilmembers, it has come to my attention that one of the council members here is under investigation by the San Antonio County District Attorney's Office for alleged voter registration fraud on her voter registration and council member nomination papers. I think this is a very serious matter. It involves, involves allegations of using a false address, and in light of this, I ask that councilmember Sue DeGree step down from the city council. Thank you.
Item Deborah Gold, Tree Stier, and Tom Thompson.
Uh, my name is Deborah Gold. I live in Pacifica Manor. I'm, I want to urge you, as Haya did, to consider how you can make these meetings more accessible to all the residents of Pacifica. It may appear to be democratic to let dozens and dozens of people speak endlessly saying the same things for three minutes, but meetings which go on for five or six hours are not democratic. Nobody can be here for the decisions. I encourage you to review your rules and procedures. Other locations do things like give fifteen minutes to one side to do a presentation and fifteen minutes to another, and then they limit any other speakers to thirty seconds. I mean, it's a, you can, you can do something to make these meetings more democratic. It is also absurd that we're having meetings where people can't sit. As a disabled person myself, I don't feel I should have to call up twenty-four hours in advance just to make sure that I can reserve one of these seats. And I think that, right now, I would say, people who are able-bodied should get up and let people who are disabled sit down, and I think in the future the council should make a better effort at making these meetings accessible. Thank you very much.
Uh, Tree Stier, Tom Thompson, Mike Haddock.
Teresa Dyer, fourteen oh eight Cresby Drive. I just want to bring to your attention that the management is in violation of the California Fair Practice Commission. I put in the request, and it should have been responded within ten days, and it's over a month, and I will further discuss that under consideration number seven. But I want to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Okay, Tom Thompson, Mike Haddock, and Judy Taylor.
Councilmembers, my name is Tom Thompson. I'm a Pacifica property owner and taxpayer, and also a founding member of the Pacifica Rent Advisory Task Force. I attended city council meetings in two thousand fifteen and two thousand sixteen, where it was discussed many times that city staff members heavily intervened in the affairs of Pacific Skies Estates. Under the guise of helping tenants, the city manager negotiated agreement, agreements with city, Pacific Skies Estates. The city then used, issued permits for necessary health and safety renovations, and, and then I watched the council effectively torpedo the project by not allowing the work to proceed. Today, over ninety units in Pacific Estate, Pacific Skies Estates currently sit mostly vacant. And all this was while councilmember Sue DeGree was an alleged secret tenant at Pacific Skies Estates, having never disclosed she may have lived there during city council meetings I attended. This resulted in much-needed affordable housing remaining vacant. This is so harmful to Pacifica. Miss DeGree, Sue DeGree allegedly falsified her address on voter registration documents, and then apparently voted, presumably for herself, with a false address. Then allegedly also falsified her address under penalty of perjury when she ran for council. Then it appears she may have withheld the truth about her false address while the city council made significant long-term decision, decisions affecting Pacific Skies Estates, where she is said to have secretly resided at the time. This is embarrassing to the good people of Pacifica and the city council. I have verified that the district attorney is investigating Miss DeGree. She must step down immediately tonight, before any matters on the agenda are called. It's just not right for her to continue to vote on the city council until the district attorney's investigation is completed. Councilmembers, thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
We're not allowed to converse with you, sorry.
Thank you for not conversing.
Um, Mike Haddock, Judy Taylor, Mark Steckbart. Mr. Haddock, I have two cards here. Did you want to speak on another item?
That's correct.
Which other item?
One that's written on there unless it's disappeared.
It's blank.
Uh, it was supposed, it did say item number nine.
Okay.
Thank you for asking. Councilmembers, mayor, and mostly people of Pacifica, at the last city council meeting, there was a large elephant in the room. All fair-minded and law-abiding citizens expected an action or position would be taken on that looming concern. However, that potentially damaging and embarrassing subject was never mentioned during the entire four-and-a-half-hour meeting. As we all know, a sitting, sitting city council member in Pacifica is being investigated by the county district attorney's office for very serious voter fraud and perjury crimes. Despite having proof of the matter in hand, this council member was allowed to participate in the prior meeting as if all were right with the world, which it is not. Tonight, with great regret and respectful hesitance, on the behalf of all Pacificans who believe in the democratic process, we request a full explanation from the council member now, tonight. In our great country, the accused are presumed innocent. However, silence or hiding behind an attorney's advice breeds suspicion of cover-up, wrongdoing, and corruption. If these accusations are false, and you are innocent, we reserve, you deserve, or we deserve to hear it from you tonight. If these well-documented accusations from a credible source are correct, please do the right thing for Pacifica. Step down from office tonight. Do the decent thing and recuse yourself from voting until cleared of these very serious felony charges. The disgraced former San Francisco supervisor, Ed Yu, served time in jail for similar crimes, yet this Pacifica council member presumes to be above the law. Be the good example this community deserves. Remove this huge element from, from Pacifica and the city council tonight. Be honest with us. Step down. It's a fair thing to do. It's the right thing to do. It's the right thing to do for Pacifica. Thank you.
Judy Taylor, Mark Steckbart, and Tiger.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. I'm a neighbor. I'm from Half Moon Bay, El Granada, actually, and I've been involved with local affairs for a number of years, dealing with small agencies and permitting processes. And often we come before a, a local board or agency, and people's lives are pretty messed up because of technicalities. And it's important as we move forward with the very complicated things that we have to deal with as a society. I'm, I'm seeing, you know, Highway One signs and rent control. We've got sea level rise, growing income inequality, ways to make government pay for itself. And when we can't trust the people that are elected to take those difficult decisions, it makes it very, very hard. And I'm a lefty. I'm a progressive. I bleed green. I've been involved in permitting and involved in property rights as a civil liberty for a number of years. And when people can't trust the government, for those of us who believe that there is a robust and vigorous place for government to play, a role for government to play in making our lives better, when we can't trust the people that are making those decisions, for those of us out in the community, it makes that rock that we're pushing up a hill a lot bigger, and it makes the hill a lot steeper. And so I would ask, please take that into consideration as you make your personal decisions about how you serve your community. Thank you.
Mark Steckbart, Tiger, and Alisa, I believe it's Johnson, or Rule Johnson?
Thank you. Uh, two items, one of which is, I don't believe in censoring resident and taxpayer testimony at city council. I think there's nothing more important than what the public has to say. I think if anybody should be put on a meter at city council for two-minute comments, it would speed up the agenda markedly and improve the level of debate. You've got an agenda problem. It's too long all the time. You can control that. It's not a matter of public speaking. I would like to read into the record what the DA Public Integrity Unit sent to a variety of people last week that's on the blogs. In the past week, we've received requests from a number of conservative citizens to take action with regard to Pacifica City Councilmember Sue DeGree. It's been alleged that since two thousand twelve, she resided in an address other than the one listed on her voter registration and council member nomination documents. Since those documents are signed under penalty of perjury, we have been requested to review the matter to determine whether Councilwoman DeGree has violated the law in this regard. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Promoting honesty and integrity in government is an important societal interest. We take these allegations and your concerns seriously. The issues raised by the allegations involve both factual and legal determinations, and cannot be made quickly, so it's under investigation. I'm absolutely stunned that this town does not have an ethics guideline that stipulates anybody under this level of investigation, and also fair political practices has a complaint as well, is sitting up on the podium voting, like nothing has happened. Well, something very fundamentally might have happened. I think the public deserves better. And if nothing else, if it takes the DA more than a couple days or a week to investigate these allegations and come back with a report, I will request that you guys write an ethics practice that situations like this, you're required to step down until it's cleared, one way or the other, because the exposure is too high for this town. Everything you do tonight on a three-two vote will be subject probably to litigation. Why risk it? It's just not fair to the voters. Thank you.
Tiger, please, no, no, please, please, quiet. Okay, it's not fair to either side or anybody's opinion if you clap or boo or anything, so please treat everybody with respect. Everybody's entitled to their opinion, whether you are for or against it. If it does become too boisterous, the council will take a five-minute break. Okay? Tiger, Alicia Rev Johnson, and Susan Lewis.
And clapping and booing makes a long evening that much longer. Um, I did not put a card for oral communication, however, since I'm here, I'm happy to speak, and I'm happy to place a card, though the three cards I placed were all on various topic items. Um, while I'm here, first of all, and first of all, I'm good evening, honorable mayor and council. I am Tiger Jastrow, Big Stick of Pacifica. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for, at our last meeting, limiting the time to two minutes for what was a contentious agenda item, so that we could get out of here a little quicker and keep it a little bit more succinct. Um, also, thank you for allowing us our First Amendment right to speak on our own behalves of our own opinions, and to maybe even offer ideas outside of groupings that might naturally occur. And that being said, I just would like to take a moment to remind everyone in the room that, for the most part, everyone in the room gets to live in the same community with one another when this evening is over. Hopefully, when this evening is over, we can live in a community together in which we do not hate each other. I think that would be ideal. It occurs to me that the great world religions generally say something about loving your neighbor or each other, or treating each other with kindness, and if you happen not to subscribe to a religion, you probably think that treating each other with respect is a good idea. So thank you for this time I was not expecting to have, and that is all for now.
Okay. So I have Alicia Johnson. Okay, good, she heard my name.
Hi, Alisa Reese Johnson. Thank you for being here.
Susan Lewis and Lori Kobo. Sorry.
Oh, I'm really sorry to say this, but I'm going to ask for Sue DeGree to step down because of her being under investigation from the district attorney, and it's not something I'm happy to say, but I think that things have to be done right in the world, and we just try to do what's right. And so I'm just trying to do what's right. So Sue, please step down.
Okay, we have Susan Lewis, Lori Kobo, Victoria Becker.
Good evening, mayor, councilmembers. Tonight, let's talk about choices. Choices carry consequences. A councilmember, Sue DeGree, made choices. It appears that she chose to commit voter fraud in seven elections, for whatever reason. She allegedly chose to perjure herself in running for office. These serious matters are under investigation by the county district attorney's office. When an elected official chooses to ignore the law, it's a blatant disregard of the public trust. We expect elected officials to work within the boundaries of the law. Elected officials swear an oath of office to uphold the rules that they themselves create. We have a social contract, an implied agreement, that we make in order to live together in harmony. Good citizens respect all of the rules for the greater good, such as following proper voter and election procedures. Why would a councilmember act as if the laws do not apply to her, when they most surely do? Because of her own actions, it appears councilmember DeGree must now make new choices. She can choose to put herself and all citizens through an embarrassing and humiliating recall, or wait for the district attorney to press charges against her and thus risk years in prison, or she could recuse herself from all voting tonight. Recusing herself is the right thing to do. Or she could choose to resign from office. She could choose to let her legacy be her years of service to this community. Resigning is the right thing to do for Pacifica. Please treat Pacifica with respect.
Okay, we have Susan Lewis, Lori Kobo, Victoria Becker. Oh, sorry, I already had her. Okay, Lori Kobo, Victoria Becker, Cindy Abbott. I apologize. Lori Kobo?
I think he needs to sit down.
Okay. Uh, Victoria Becker, Cindy Abbott, and Lynn Adams.
Hi, I'm Victoria Becker. I came into this, I wasn't planning on speaking and oral comments. I am absolutely appalled that suddenly there is some sort of witch hunt going against Sue DeGree when there's absolutely no proof of any of these allegations. I don't, I, I, I'm absolutely appalled. I feel like this is just a plan for people, by the developers, to want to try to get somebody off city council who's in support of fair rents and other progressive causes, and other progressive causes in this town. I am absolutely appalled to see this going on. I totally support Sue DeGree. She's done nothing but be a, a excellent public servant.
Okay, next we have Cindy Abbott, Lynn Adams, Ron Mako. Cindy Abbott? Okay, there she is. Lynn Adams and Ron Mako.
Hey, on a different topic. Hello, I'm Cindy Abbott, Executive Director at the Sanchez Art Center. On Friday, May fifth, from six to ten P.M., Sanchez Art Center will be holding a once-in-two-decade celebration and benefit, because twenty years of creating community through art, something that we've all in this community done together, is an accomplishment worthy of a dance party and concert. The galleries will be open for a private showing for concertgoers from six to ten, then we'll move to the Mildred Owen Concert Hall for music and dancing. Concert tickets are only forty dollars in advance, and all proceeds will support Sanchez Art Center. Art's always been an important part of Pacifica's cultural landscape, and we see more and more how art makes a difference in the world, particularly in these times. Art provides an outlet for truth and freedom of expression, provides space for escape and healing, and provides opportunity for the community to come together, learn about each other, and share opportunities and feelings. Since our founding in nineteen ninety-six, SAC has established a strong reputation as a unique and comprehensive visual art resource for artists in the community at large. Last year alone, five thousand one hundred and fifty people attended eighteen exhibitions, where the work of more than four hundred of artists of all ages was shown. This past Friday, three hundred people from throughout the Bay Area came to Pacifica and attended the opening of the two thousand seventeen Left Coast Annual, one of our two juried exhibitions. Speaking with attendees was gratifying, as they shared their enthusiasm for the high caliber of work and the quality of the installations. Over the weekend, I was told by a Pacifican how the current exhibition touched her soul, and that brought me goosebumps, because that's what we do, and that's why we're there, and that's why we do this, for free, because art connects us, and art should be accessible to people of all ages and backgrounds, and we have this remarkable place right here in Pacifica that you can go to at no charge. Whether you're a regular visitor to Sanchez Art Center, haven't been there before, or haven't been in a while, we hope you'll visit us soon and come out and support Sanchez Art Center on Friday, May fifth, if it's with your support that we can keep this one-of-a-kind community treasure open. Tickets are available at Sanchez Art Center and online through our website, and our board members and I generally have a few tickets in our pockets, too. And we hope that we can all come together and have a really fun time. Thanks.
Okay, Lynn Adams, Ron Mako, Michael Doltz.
On Saturday, we celebrated Earth Day in a very big way here in Pacifica, and I'd like to put a shout-out to all the volunteers, all the volunteer leaders, all the groups and community groups, all the schools who had school assemblies. Um, I, I'd like to thank the people that took action. I'd like to thank Deirdre Martin, who ran the dump site and did the VIP tour. And, um, I, I, I'd like to commend Pacifica for getting behind this event. It's something that we can do together that makes our community better. Instead of fighting, we work together. We meet each other, we talk to each other, we have fun. Um, I took the VIP tour around to four or five different locations, and before we went to see the first location, I asked everybody to stop and look, because there were little girl, little brownies and larger, taller, older Girl Scouts, and they were having the time of their life. And it was so pleasant and wonderful to see, and that's what hap, what's happening in every location. People are having fun, and they're making Pacifica a better place, and our, our world a better place. It's been a joy to do that. We followed it up with the EcoFest. We probably had twenty-five-hundred or more visitors to the EcoFest. One of the great things at the EcoFest was, um, our paint the bucket contest was on display. We had thirty buckets displayed, and we asked people to choose which one was their choice, their favorite one, and we had a People's Choice Award. their favorite one, and we had a People's Choice Award from that. It was a beautiful thing. It brought people together with art and environment, and there was just an amazing response. It was also terrific to share our work with representatives from Jackie Speer and Kamala Harris's office, with the Deputy Director of the California Coastal Commission, and with City of Pacifica representatives, Van, Mike, Tina and Deirdre Finnegan, and to have people witness the magic of Earth Day that has transformed our town since we started cleaning the streets in 2006. Our group and, and with the, with the volunteers' learning and the educational outreach, we've made a splash, and now we're trying to end trash. So, it's pretty, pretty exciting, and I could go on and on. As a matter of fact, I would recommend that maybe the Beach Coalition give you a report of some of the projects and the, and the jobs that happened. Deirdre can probably speak more about how much trash was, was, was recovered, but I can clarify, I can clearly say that it's a fraction of what we got from 2006 to 2010. Thank you.
Ron Makeel, Michael Doltz and Bridget Duffy.
Evening, Mayor, Council. Tough act to follow, Cindy Abbott and Lynn Adams, couple of real serious patriots of Pacifica, and they really helped moving this town forward in a good way, environment and our culture. First of all, Mike, I think you're going to go down, make the Guinness Book of Records being the mayor that's going to have the most contentious council meetings and the most people at council meetings, but you got eight months ago, so we'll see how that works out. Man, I tell you, I don't feel, I, I don't envy any of you people up there, really don't, but I appreciate what you're doing. I just wanted to say, I'm here to talk about, you know, the pay parking we have over there in Lindemar. I'd like, I don't know who the council liaisons for the Economic Development Committee, but I think it would be nice to agendize for discussion, get that committee to look at the idea of doing that at Rockaway. You've got the parking lot by Calera Creek, and you've got the parking lot on the south end over there, the surf, you know, where we have the surfing showers and stuff, that parking lot. And also, there's parking right all, all along here, you know, out here, along the, you know, the Peach Boulevard here, all the way down, you know, and where the street, I guess it's Lakeside, goes by the golf course. I'd like to see that at least agendized for discussion, that the Economic Development Committee, you know, pay parking for those areas. That's, it's something I think should be at least looked into, so that we could, you know, make a decision whether that would be, you know, be good for the city to do that. I think it might be. So, anyway, Economic Development Committee, Council, liaison, give that some consideration. That's all. Thank you.
I'm Michael Doltz. Bridget Duffy.
Hi, I'm Michael Doltz. I live in Manor District of Pacifica. I just wanted to touch briefly on these allegations that, about this investigation. In this country, I thought we were innocent until proven guilty, and in order for that to even come about, charges have to be filed. This is nothing more than an investigation so far at this point. All it takes to launch an investigation is an allegation, and that allegation can be totally founded and it can be totally baseless, but that will launch an investigation. So, at this point, there is nothing wrong. If people feel that Sue should step down because there's an investigation going on, say that, but Sue should not be talked to like she's automatically guilty. Nothing has been found from this investigation yet, and to blame her for the, what happened at Pacific Skies Estates, that's totally absurd. That happened because the former city manager and the planning director did not do the proper research for the coastal permits. Had a temporary moratorium gone into place that was asked for back then, and that was only for 30 days, that would have saved Pacific Skies Estates. Not necessarily as low income, not necessarily as high income, but that would have at least delayed long enough for them to realize that the coastal commission did not issue the proper permits. So, at this point, it's nothing more than an investigation. Sue is not guilty of anything. Thank you.
Bridget Duffy and Lori Kobo, and these are the last two cards for oral communications.
Hi, my name is Bridget Duffy. I'm an American. I'm a Pacifican. I'm a patriot. It's killing me what's happening to my country, and I've decided to try to do something about it. So, I've introduced revolution solutions, a revolution centered in love and accomplished by you, and I hope that goes for everybody in this room. I hope we're Americans first. I hope we're Pacificans first. Anyway, May 8th, two weeks from now, 5 to 9, there'll be food, there'll be drinks, there'll be a self-guided informational art institute installment, where I'm hoping to shed some light on some facts about what's going to be on the agenda that night here in this room, which will be the sewer issue and rent stabilization. So, it should be a really fun night, guys. I hope you come out. And if anybody out there in Pacifica has any stories, rent stories, landlord stories, any stories, my number is 415-760-2084. And I did that the last time I was here, and I bet everybody thought I was going to get a lot of calls, "Oh, she's going to get prank calls now." No, not one call, so that's okay. You can give your phone number out. But what I would like to say is, I, I'm actually kind of glad that, that this group is picking on Sue DeGree, because there is nothing going to mobilize the people of Pacifica more than taking our beloved, okay, beloved Sue DeGree, who has been fighting for people and people's issues since she's been sitting in that seat. And that, my friends, is why she's under investigation. This is a war. I've been trying to say it for two years. Renters in this town have been under siege. Two weeks ago, the, okay, this is what I want to say about the city government here. This is obvious, and, and I think the council needs to think about this. Some people need to lose their jobs, okay? Because regardless of what the people want in Pacifica, which is to save their community, we're thinking about our community. These rents are crashing our economy, they're displacing our families, our teachers, our labor force. This is a humanitarian crisis, and these people don't care. They don't care. And I think there are people who are in cahoots with these people, and that's why they're here. And I think those people need to be fired from the City of Pacifica. Okay, that's easy to do. You don't need an election to do that. There are people that are working for the people, and there are people that are working for the corporate state, and those people need to be fucking fired!
Three minutes are up. Okay, Cynthia Kaufman, Susanna Jonas.
Hi, I'm sorry to participate in making this meeting longer, but I also wanted to sort of follow up and say how much I love Sue DeGree, and I'm really appalled by the attack on her. Sue is one of the hardest-working, most ethical politicians I have ever been in community with, and there are lots of people in this community, so I just want you to say that to you personally, Sue, that we have your back. I also think that what's happening is what happens when you challenge power. If you go up against intense entrenched moneyed interests, they will throw anything at you without any ethical limitations, and I am truly disgusted and appalled. This town is being flooded by out-of-town money. It's also being flooded by people from out of town whose only interest in this town is making a profit here. And I want to really say also that the, the Sam Car, this, this, the, the Sam Car community lost the majority, and now they're having to resort to dirty tricks, and that is totally unacceptable. And I really would encourage the council members to speak up in favor of Sue and let people know, even if you don't agree with her politics, that Sue is a highly ethical person. Thank you.
Susanna, please. Susanna Jonas, or Jones? Jonas, Suzanne Jonas? And then Lori Kobo, last call. And she's, Lori's the last card.
Yes, thank you. It is Jonas.
Sorry.
Yes, it is Suzanne Jonas.
Okay.
I just wanted to say, I came here tonight, I'm pretty sick, and I came anyway because I wanted to speak about Highway 1. I feel very strongly that there should not be a ballot initiative for many, for many reasons.
That's on the agenda, so...
But, but instead, I arrived, and there's a witch hunt going on against one of the members of the city council, who has represented us reliably for many years. I want to echo the outrage of some of the previous speakers who have talked about this witch hunt, and I really feel that this meeting is getting hijacked by a different agenda than the one that I thought I came here to speak about. There is absolutely no evidence, there is no case. Sue has represented us faithfully over the years, and I expect that she will continue to do so until her term is over. And I cannot believe that I walked into the room and the first hour of the meeting has been taken up by something that was not even on the agenda, nor has any validity whatsoever. Thank you.
Leo Leon, and Leo's the last card I have for oral communications.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council. I just wanted to touch base on the concept of innocence before being proven guilty, and also the concept that it's not the best practice to talk about people, it's best practice to talk to people. And I heard these allegations recently, and I like to think of myself as, as a responsible person, and rather than spread rumor, I went to the, to the person and I asked questions. And I would suggest that anybody that has any questions about a person's status or intent, talk to that person and ask them directly the question that they need to ask them to satisfy their curiosity or their concern. That's what I did, and I'm very satisfied with the answers that I got, and I am quite certain, if those answers are true, that a lot of people here are going to be having egg on their face. Thank you very much.
Okay, that can, any more cards for oral communications? Okay, moving on to the next agenda item. Council Communications. The purpose of council communications is for council members to inform each other of items of potential interest to other council members, such as intra-agency meetings. Sue Varlos?
I attended the City and County Association of Governments, where we had a talk on Highway 1, and putting in express lanes on Highway 1, and planned Bay Area 2040, which regard, which has transportation, climate action, economics, and a whole broad cross-section of what they think the Bay Area is going to look like in 2040. Quite informative. I also attended the Free Day Progress Seminar for San Mateo elected officials, business people, services, and it was an education for all of those groups that came together to address critical issues for all of us in the county. They held workshops on housing, on marijuana, on big data and transportation, and it was very important for the whole community. Mike and Sue also attended. As far as the beach, I'm monitoring a cigarette can in Rockaway, so please make sure you put all your butts in the can. I do clean it out, and I'm proud to see it's full often, so please make sure all the smokers out there deposit their butts in the cans. Thank you.
I was at the same meeting as Sue, but I want to correct her, it was express lanes and Highway 101, not 1.
I'm sorry. I did mean 101.
Deirdre?
You scared me, Sue.
I wrote 101.
Okay, I need a few minutes. So, Earth Day, Lynn did a really good job of describing everything, but I get more time than you do, Lynn. So, a huge thank you to Public Works and to the city for all their planning and preparation, and the day of and post-support. I mean, they're still helping us out, so thank you for everything. It, it's really great to see all the collaboration. We had representation from, you know, California State Senator Kamala Harris here, and without Lynn and her team and the steering committee putting together a VIP tour, Congresswoman Jackie Speer's office was represented. We had emcees supervisor David Canepa and Senator Jerry Hill. These are like a not-to-be-missed event. We're, we're getting a lot of really good press here, and these are the kind of events that bring us together. So, whether you're here for Beach Coalition or not, come next year, and, and come every weekend, because there is a cleanup every weekend. I was on the bus tour that went around, the VIP tour, Lynn calls it. Kind of felt a little like a safari ride until we got out of the, of the vehicles, but Lynn was right. She said, "Shh, look at them, watch, they're having so much fun." And they were having a blast pulling weeds, and we got to, you know, ask them what they were doing. So, we visited Valymar. The Boy Scouts were conducting some serious Calera Creek, like gardening and restoration. They were pulling ivy off of large trees and having a blast. The Girl Scouts were weeding in front of the Valymar School with the help of some of the school district folks. Ocean Shore families were weeding and planting in the roundabout there. Along with the Mothers Club, I saw a whole neighborhood come together up in Manor to plant and weed and mulch in Edgemar Park. The city supplied some fruit trees and mulch, and it was really amazing to see this entire park flooded with children and parents and community members, just really all because of Earth Day. They're taking care of it all year round, but that was an amazing day. And then I want to thank the founders of, of, of the Pacifica Beach Coalition and the steering committee who makes it all happen, and of course, President Lynn Adams, who's really the energy behind all of this. So, it was really amazing not to be missed next year. Update, Library Advisory Committee was canceled, but we rescheduled to this Wednesday here. I think it's at 5:30 or 6:00. Check the, check the calendar. The Emergency Preparedness Commission, I missed this past month, I was ill, so I hope to get a report. Nothing pressing came up afterwards to me directly, so I'll give you a report next month. SAM Trans, Community Transit Forums coming up this Thursday at 6:30 at the Community Center. Show up, discuss coastside transit planning. The SAM Trans folks did a forum down in Half Moon Bay. It's really nice to see that there's some coastside planning going on. Ways to decrease our greenhouse gases by carpool options, rideshare applications, et cetera. Come, show up, share your experiences, and, and hear what they have to say, because they've been studying us. Unfortunately, I won't be able to attend, because I'm attending my first C-CAG bike and pedestrian meeting, but I'm going to be working on the same things that, that you guys will that night, too. So, so that's exciting. The Pacifica Resource Center, we meet Wednesday, May 3rd. So, a couple side notes for folks who are here tonight. I would really like to plead with you, if you're not a property owner in Pacifica or a voter in Pacifica, just think about if this were your town and you didn't get to have a fair voice. I would just plead with you to hold off, if you've already spoken here last meeting, let the people who live here, who own property here and who vote here, speak. It's really important. If we were in your town, you would really appreciate that we did that, too. It's about all of us. Thank you. Also, I would really like to just express that I really do think there's an ulterior motive going on with this supposed witch hunt around Sue DeGree. I think everyone is smart enough to try to, to figure it out themselves, so I agree with Leo Leon. Went to the source myself. I'm convinced everything's okay, and I think everyone else should just kind of mind their own business. Thank you.
Sue DeGree?
All right, so the alleged felon may speak. I definitely in favor of every process to investigate public officials and protect the public voice at all costs. I certainly support that. And so, some of the meetings I have attended out of town was Office of Emergency Services. In our city, I'm very happy to say, we're right on board with everything that needs to be done. In town, the Economic Development Committee and the Open Space Committee have wonderful people on there, were doing very, very good thinkers. Folks come from all around Pacifica, and the Portola event is coming up in 2019. I'm very happy to see that these two committees, plus the city, under PBNR, staff member Mike Perez, we're all, and the Historical Society, we're all working extremely hard to have Pacifica be in its rightful place as a highlight of part of those celebrations of the Portola expedition. expedition. And it's none too soon to get started. And small businesses and hotels, too, those are very important, so as the fabric of our whole community. And the cultural, as Cindy pointed out, the cultural arts and the music, all of these things together as a package of who we are as Pacificans, this is our opportunity to shine. And I am pleased that we have a lot of things in place to make sure that that event, which will also honor Native Americans and our community, has great assets regarding Native American history here, so that we will be right on target and hopefully have a lot of good public foot traffic for our community. And Caltrans itself has opened to making sure that Highway One is looking good so that our city is well-represented. And I don't know if you know that the Portola's home, birthplace, was our sister city. And our sister city people are at the table as well, so hopefully we'll be moving better along the way of Sister City, because I don't think we hear too much on that. Also did to the progress seminar and the types of things that Sue mentioned, transportation, housing, marijuana, and data. All of those things are very relevant, very, very thorough and relevant to some of the things on our agenda and our upcoming agendas. Also had the opportunity to meet with Assembly Member Kevin Mullen to kind of go over what I just talked to you about, and to discuss with him again, as I had previously, but to bring it up to date as Pacifica as an asset to the entire state. And I'm very happy that he's always been very open to that. And so those things will be going forward. And on that score, if we could, please, I forgot to mention at the beginning, if we could adjourn in honor of Mrs. Mullen, and Assembly Member Jean Mullen, and his son Kevin Mullen, who is now the Speaker pro temp, you know, that was, they just had the funeral, unfortunately I missed it. But I think we had talked about sending a card to the family, and if we adjourned in her honor.
Her name was Alida, I think. Her name was Alida?
Alida Mullen.
A-L-D-A.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
John?
Yeah, so I attended the, the Earth Day celebration Saturday, EcoFest, and got a chance to chat with a really wide variety of folks, from our state senator down to a whole lot of citizens. And so I thank you all for that. I would like to request that something be put on the agenda somewhere in the future, and that, that something is a little complex, or not complex, but a little redundant, I I think that the agenda packets should be prepared and posted on, by Wednesday instead of Friday. And if we could put that on the agenda to discuss that, I'd be very grateful. Thank you.
Okay. Is that a yellow card that needs to be over here? Okay, okay. So, I mean, actually kind of busy. I drove the woman that works for the San Mateo County Visitors Bureau, and she's in charge of, if a film company wants to film in San Mateo County, they contact her. So I gave her a tour of Pacifica. I showed her different, you know, the streets, different landmarks, this, this, history, all of this stuff. And we actually did find a house that she went up, and they would like to use it in the sequel of the movie Goonie. The Goon, yeah, so I found a house that looks like the Goonie House. And it is in Pacifica. The next is, we all attended the Budget Study Session. It was the first of our several Budget Study Sessions, and this was on long-term financial planning. It also was, it was really kind of neat, I was able to attend the rededication of the senior housing project across the street from the Community Center. It's Bridge, it was financed and managed by Bridge Housing. They did a really nice job. I had been in there once before, before Bridge, and now I was there after Bridge, and it looked a lot better. There's 100 units there of affordable senior housing. It was real interesting. I also, John and I were both at the articulation meeting between the high school district, the elementary school district, water district, and ourselves. And it was interesting, one of the challenges they're really having is with SAM Trans also. Apparently, the buses are not showing up to pick kids up. So that is an issue with elementary school kids waiting at a bus stop. And they are having some of the same difficulties others are in Pacifica. I did attend the progress seminar, and I got a couple little nuggets there that I was going to follow up with the city manager at and see if we can move forward on those. And then John and I both attended congestion management, and I know we got some news there that near, dear to heart of everybody in Pacifica, and that is approximately $650,000 to pave streets. So I know everybody will be happy about that. My alignment will be also. Okay, so next, we have Staff Communications. Is there any staff? No, nothing. Oh, by the way, I did show the interim city manager of Pacifica, and he saw the Goonie House, too. So we are having no public hearings, so we're going to move right into items for consideration. And just to be sure, everybody's aware, in case they came in late, the Parks, Beach, Recreation Commission, and Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee annual reports have both been moved forward to a different date, not yet determined. And item number seven, the proposed general fund budget, has been moved to the last item. And the Highway One issue and the interim rent ordinance are next on the agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know that. I guess Parks, Beach, and Recreation, Open Space, and Parkland have been moved to the May 22nd agenda. Thanks. So moving forward, we are going to have...
You have to turn the light on.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sue.
I have one more question. There was the item of Sue Degree brought up on both sides. What's the opinion of the city attorney on that?
What item?
I'm not sure I'm following, what, what are you asking?
There were people who asked for Sue Degree to sit down, there were other people who said it didn't matter. What is the opinion of the city attorney on that case?
There is nothing that legally requires at this point for the, that we're aware of, that Councilmember Degree resigned from her position.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we are going to basically have the same rules we did last time when we were discussing the interim rent control ordinance, and that is two minutes for each speaker, whether you're yea or nay, it's two minutes. The item will be heard as follows. The staff will present a staff report, the council may ask questions of staff, the public will be allowed to speak for two minutes, the public comment period will be closed, and the council will then discuss the item. Members of the public will be allowed to speak for two minutes each. In order to allow everyone the opportunity to speak, we will monitor the time and ask speakers to wrap up at the end of the two-minute timeframe. After the public comment period has been closed, we will not take additional comments, although we may ask follow-up questions. So please take the opportunity to speak during the public comment period. If you wish to speak, please fill out a speaker card, provide it to the town clerk or to chief stile in the back, and you will be called to the podium when is your turn to speak for two minutes. We recognize that there may be a significant number of speakers on both of these items. In order to allow everyone an opportunity to speak, we request that speakers avoid repetition of views already expressed. We understand that people have strong feelings about this item. Everybody's passionate, and everybody thinks they, their idea is what's best for Pacifica. However, in order to treat everyone with respect and not intimidate anyone from speaking, we ask that there be no applause, booing, or commenting from the audience. You may express your opinion when you are called upon to come to the podium and address the council. If there are outbursts from the audience, I'll pound the gavel, and they've given me two tonight. Remind the audience, I would like to remind you that the council has requested that audience members refrain from applauding, booing, or making comments about any speaker. If outbursts continue, it's a second reminder to refrain from the applauding, booing, or making comments. If the disruptions continue, the council will take a recess. And if outbursts continue, I will recess the hearing, and everyone at the days will get up. And to discourage continued comments, and I will ask the chief of police to escort the person out of the building. And if it is important, therefore, we will take a recess, and I would ask that the people disrupting the hearing be escorted out. So those are kind of the rules. I ask, I think we speak as united, that we would all, we want to hear from everybody, and we respect everybody's opinion, and I think we all agree to those rules. So, staff report first, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. During the, during your March 13th, 2017 city council meeting, an ordinance was introduced which prohibits any city actions supporting development of through lanes on Highway One without approval of the City of Pacifica voters. At that same time, the council directed staff to bring this item before you tonight, for you to discuss whether to place a ballot measure regarding that issue on the ballot in the, in the fairly near future. So we are asking tonight for the city council to provide staff with direction on whether or not to place a measure on the ballot regarding whether the electorate would approve additional through lanes on Highway One. Should you choose to put a measure on the ballot, we'd also ask direction whether or not you'd like that measure on the ballot at the next regular municipal election in November 2018, or the special election on November 2017. And with that, if you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
Any staff, any council questions of staff?
Do you want to send?
Okay. Okay, we'll start to open up public communications. I'll call three names, and remember you have two minutes. So Julie Starobin, Gilbert Anda, and Ellen Haig.
I wanted to urge the council not to put it on the ballot so quickly. A number of reasons. One is there is no plan. The federal lawsuit told, told Caltrans they had to go back to square one and come up with a new plan, which they have not done yet, so there's nothing to put on the ballot. Number two, the council just voted to spend, and the county approved the money to spend on intelligent design lights, smart lights, we should give them a chance to work. This takes time, they haven't even been installed yet, but they were approved, and the money was approved. And also, the council last time voted to have a study session or a study group to study other alternatives for Highway One. And until we have that, and until we see whether those work, it doesn't seem logical at all to put it on the ballot. Thank you.
Okay, we have Gilbert Anda, Ellen Haig, and Suzanne Moore.
I am Gilbert Anda, live in Burlingame. My family also owns lots that would be purchased should the state go through with widening the highway. By this time, the, the process has gone through an environmental impact report, probably great expense with consultants. I would say you're, seems like you're about three-quarters of the way through. And I think it makes all the sense in the world to, you know, have this go up for a vote as soon as possible, so that you can follow the process through and avoid a lot of the excess expense. And, you know, just as a reminder, putting it to a vote, you know, emphatically settles the question whether it's, you know, the will of the people or not. Thank you.
Ellen Haig, Suzanne Moore, and then Suzanne Jonas.
Good evening, Ellen Haig, resident of Pacifica. I would like to speak against a ballot measure to authorize construction and/or development of additional through lanes on Highway One. I urge city council to vote against placing such a ballot measure on the next election. Thank you very much.
Suzanne Moore, Suzanne Jonas, and Chaya Gordon.
Good evening. Pacifica residents deserve to study options for Highway One widening. Do not place the widening ordinance on the November ballot. Thank you.
Wow, that was quick. Suzanne Jonas, and Chaya Gordon, and Leo Leon.
Yeah, yes, good evening, again. I wanted to just register strong opposition to putting the ballot measure on, to put in a measure for widening on the ballot. All of a sudden, just like this, this issue has been going on for years. Caltrans has to go back and redo parts of its EIR. There are all kinds of legal and practical obstacles. We don't even know what the plan would be for widening. And we have, in the meantime, through the voting process, expressed very clearly that there's a lot of skepticism about the traffic and other implications of widening. And this, to suddenly now rush and put it on the ballot, would be counter to the very careful process that has been gone through by people working on this issue for years and years. Therefore, I want to register very strong objection to any immediate or midterm, like in the next two years, measure being put by the council on the ballot. Thank you very much.
Chaya Gordon, Leo Leon, and Tiger.
There are numerous problems with putting the Calera Parkway project on the ballot now. I'm just going to mention a few. The city has just instructed staff last month to investigate alternatives, and it's clear from various elections and other things that that is a direction that the majority of Pacificans are interested in. Pacificans may be interested in improving traffic congestion on Highway One, but not at the expense of our environment. If you destroy the environment in Pacifica, that's pretty much destroying Pacifica. The Caltrans plan, just to remind you, would widen the 1.3 miles between Fassler and Reyna del Mar to be wider than Highway 280. That, in my mind, would of course have to go into part of the wetlands on the west side. There is a pending federal lawsuit, I'm sure the council is aware of, against Caltrans, and the judge several months ago ruled that the environmental impact in that lawsuit violated the Federal Endangered Species Act. Because of that, which the judge detailed in fantastic detail, the judge invalidated the final EIR. So there is no environmental approval for the Calera Parkway project now. Now, if you put that together logically, that means there is no final plan, and it means that there is no way forward without environmental approval. So with those things, the final project plan lacking, no environmental approval, and clear opposition from a majority of Pacificans, there is no purpose, and it is totally meaningless and inappropriate to go to a public vote now. Thank you.
Okay, Leo Leon, Tiger, and Victoria Becker.
Thank you, Mayor. I sent you all a letter that I found from the City of Pacifica representing the city council dated June 24th, 2013, which is before the majority on the council now, we're even sitting on the city council. So it might be of some instruction to you. That letter sets out conditions and actions that the city council has to take regarding the Calera Parkway project. One is whether or not to approve the maintenance of the median strip that is included in, in the proposed Calera Parkway. And that, that decision is pending, the completion will... And that, that decision is pending the completion of a final EIR. The other is the request for funding for the final design. As, right now, it's just a proposal with no final design. That's also pending the FEIR. And finally, council has not made even a decision to move the project forward, and that also is pending the FEIR, the Final Environment Impact Report. Now, as you know, the federal judge invalidated the FEIR that Caltrans has certified and that the suit was brought against in federal court. So right now, there is no FEIR. The city council can't move forward on any of its commitments because they're all tied to the completion of approval of an FEIR. You just approved a mechanism, a city ordinance, that would bring the issue of additional lanes to the voters on any future project, including the proposed Calera Parkway. So until, my thinking, my opinion, until the council moves on all the stipulations that they agreed to do, that would be the tougher time, and as the ordinance you just passed provides for, to put it on the ballot. Thank you.
Tiger, Virginia, uh, excuse me, Victoria Becker, Debra Gold.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council. I don't want to elaborate. Given how contentious an issue this is in town, of course, you should let the people decide what everybody together wants to do to impact dramatically their own community. Thank you.
Victoria Becker, Debra Gold, William Lotenberger.
Hi, I'm Victoria Becker. I just want to urge the council to not vote, to do a vote on Highway One widening at this time because there really isn't a plan, for all the reasons that people have said, and there has been no time to see if alternative methods to improve the traffic situation can work. And it just makes absolutely no sense, and it's, it's, it's just kind of a spurious idea, and it's taking up a lot of time to have to have this discussion.
Debra Gold, William Lotenberger, Cynthia Kaufman.
I'm Debra Gold. I'll try to speak briefly. I agree that there is, there is no reason to put this on the ballot yet because there is no proposal to vote on. So once again, we will have to run a campaign that says, "Don't vote for a blank check", which was the problem with Measure W. So let's just not do it. If there is a realistic proposal from Caltrans about what they want to do to widen Highway One, then we'll vote on it. Not until then. Thank you.
William Lotenberger, Cynthia Kaufman, Denny Asness.
Hello, William Lotenberger. I'm asking you to kill this boondoggle. It is not just a waste of time and money. It is counterproductive. It will cause people to be in their cars longer, not less. Everybody's going crazy, going, "I want to get there faster, give me three lanes." Well, when it hits the new, brand-new bottleneck, there is no bottleneck now, and there's a brand-new bottleneck they propose outside the police station. Traffic will slow down to about 11 miles an hour, so the car behind, and the car behind, and the car behind, going 11 miles an hour, all the way back to Fassler. Nobody can go faster than that because the car in front of you is not going faster than that. Now, today, cars go about 45 miles an hour outside the police station. They start at Fassler. I've been there, going over the hill from Crespey at 5 miles an hour. Then you get to Fassler, going maybe 10, slowly speed up, going all the way across, and going 45 miles an hour when you get to the police station. That's an average of 30 miles an hour. Given this boondoggle, you'd be going an average of 11 miles an hour. Math is easier if you say 15. That's two minutes added to the commute in order to get people out. You can't get more people out because, as we all know, they'll, they'll test in the back, everybody in Pacifica already goes at the speed limit, no more, just at the speed limit. And going at the speed limit, you can't put any more people past Shell Dance. The cars are already going at the maximum number. You can't, you're just going to slow everybody down. It's a boondoggle. Please, be the adults in the room, stand up and say, "We don't want to hurt Pacifica." Thank you very much.
Cynthia Kaufman, Denny Asness, and Shanti.
I just wanted to say that it took years of grassroots effort to get this project basically killed. Two council members recently got elected, saying that that was very of concern to them. In the most recent election, actually, nobody got elected in favor, saying that they were in favor of this project. I hope that the council, and I would say also that if there's a grassroots group that wants to advocate for the highway, they should do that and put it on the ballot when they're ready and when it's time. But in the meantime, there's no reason for the city council to do that. The city council took really logical action at the last meeting, which is to say, "We're not interested in this project because the community's not interested in the project, and we're going to go a different path." And I would also hope that the, that the council would alert the Caltrans and the Transit Authority that this project is dead, because I think it's dead. Thank you.
Denny Asness, Shanti, and Hal Bonner.
Good evening. I'm urging the council not to approve a motion to amend the Highway One ordinance to require a public vote in an upcoming election for several reasons. The council has just recently approved investigating alternatives, and time is needed for this process to occur meaningfully. As someone who sits at that Rockaway light when there's no one else in sight, I am really looking forward to seeing how the smart lights can affect the flow of traffic in a better way. But we need time to see what happens there. The judge in PH1A, also the judge in PH1A's pending federal lawsuit ruled that Caltrans' final environmental approval is invalid, and finally, there is no final project plan, as people have explained. The council needs to respect the democratic process before forcing an untimely vote. Most voters in Pacifica have shown that they don't support the highway widening, but for those who need more information and education, it's crucial that the council allow the time to get this information out before this would be voted on. Thank you.
Shanti, Hal Bonner, and Bridget Duffy.
We can all agree that we have a serious traffic problem in Pacifica. No one is going to argue against that. I think that the problem with this proposal is that there's a lot of misconceptions. A lot of people are under the impression that we're going to widen three lanes from Lindemar all the way to where Highway One already is three lanes, and that would make just a little bit too much sense. I mean, what's going to happen here is a no-brainer. It's going to go from two lanes to three lanes, everyone's going to spread out, and then it's going to bottleneck down to two lanes where it's going to come this incredible jam that's slowing it down more than it is right now, and then back to three lanes. So until someone has a sensical project where it's going to continue to be three lanes without a bottleneck, I'd encourage you to shut this one down. Let's start with something that makes sense, like smart lights. These are extremely cost-effective, virtually no environmental impact, and they've proven to be successful everywhere they're out. So let's start with smart and cost-effective, and wait for someone to come up with a proposal that will truly widen this to three lanes all the way down. Thanks.
Hal Bonner, Bridget Duffy, Peter Loeb.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Yeah, I'm in agreement with pretty much everybody you've heard speak on this tonight. That is, please do not put this on the ballot. You've heard a number of very good reasons. I'll just reiterate a couple. I, I'm really kind of shocked that you're even talking about this. The, on the March 13th meeting, I'll just read to you from a resolution that all five of you supported, and it says, "Whereas the city council desires to investigate alternatives to the preferred solutions of Caltrans." You're all saying you want to investigate alternatives, and yet, you're talking tonight about completely bypassing that, about completely overlooking that, about telling staff, "No, don't investigate alternatives." You just, all five of you, voted to investigate alternatives. Well, give them a chance to work, please. I would also, if, if there is a group in this town that wants, well, let me, let me speak to another thing. What exactly would you put on the ballot? Do you want the public just to vote, "We want a bunch more lanes on Highway One"? Is that what it is? Because the Calera Parkway project is basically dead, and you can't resurrect it. Are you just going to say, "We, the people of Pacifica, want more lanes on Highway One"? Is that what you want to put on the ballot? Because that would be pretty absurd, frankly. Five lanes, 10 lanes, what? You know, what are you going to put on the ballot? Anyway, I'm obviously opposed to putting this matter on the ballot. Thank you.
Bridget Duffy, Peter Loeb, Ron Maceal.
Hello. This is an issue that the people have spoken on several times. Brave members of our council wanted to put a permanent kibosh on the subject, which would free our community from having to battle the big developers and the big real estate industry every time, you know, they, let's face it, there's somebody on the council that is in the pocket of the developers, and this wouldn't even be an issue if it wasn't for that. And it is time that we all started thinking about what could we do to get there? You know, all this fighting. What are we doing? What if we were all working towards the same goal? Pacifica is full of smart people, capable people, intelligent, artistic, inventive people. We have an idea of what we want our community to look like. Go ahead, laugh. Go ahead, laugh. Yeah, no, we want to be included in the plans. We could build a city that would bring prosperity to everyone. Why can we not do that? Why is it, builders, such as our president, are not the people that are supposed to be in charge of design? That is very clear. Builders build. Builders are good. Development is good. We want those things. We want prosperity. We want to do it our way. Please include us in the discussion, is all we're asking. We don't want the widening of the highway. That is one thing we don't want, we have never wanted. The developers want it because if there's a certain flow of traffic to that area, they'll be able to put commercial properties there. So it's a development issue, and all of Pacifica should not, should unite against being...
Peter Loeb, Ron Maceal, Cindy Abbott.
Good evening, Peter Loeb. This item is on the agenda because at the March meeting that was referenced earlier, Councilmember Vatterlaus asked, said, "I'd like to have widening on the ballot." The problem is that you have to define what widening means. You can't just put widening, yea or nay. You have to specify what, what widening means, and in this case, the only, only plan that exists that specifies what we're talking about in terms of widening is the Calera Parkway project. Well, the problem with that is that a federal judge has ruled that the environmental approval for that, for the Calera Parkway is invalid. Well, Caltrans could have appealed that. That, that's, that's the summary judgment. It's not pending lawsuit. It, it's, it's the, the ruling of the federal court. Caltrans could have appealed that. The clock for that appeal ran out. Caltrans didn't appeal that decision, so that decision stands. The environmental approval for the Calera Parkway project is invalid. That means that that project is dead, and I can't see, it doesn't make any sense to me to put a project on the ballot that's dead. I don't know what else you would put on the ballot. You have to define it in some way, and if you haven't done that, what can you put on the ballot? Anyway, I'm, I'm opposed to putting that project on the ballot, or any other project, unless it's, until it's defined in some clear way. Is my time up? I guess it is. Thank you.
Ron Maceal, Cindy Abbott, and Cindy's is the last card I have on this item.
Mayor O'Neill. Yeah, on the highway issue, I agree with all these people up here. It, it seems kind of senseless if we have the issue in litigation right now, still in litigation, putting it on the ballot. Just, even thinking about putting it on the ballot doesn't make sense. The other issue, too, is of course, maybe we should consider getting Caltrans, whatever the ballot costs are, see if we get Caltrans to pay for it, because they're the ones who've kind of, their dereliction has kind of put us in this position that we're in right now. So we might want to consider that, all of that $52 million for Measure A, that maybe they could come up, use some of that for the ballot measure. I, I'm opposed to these ballots. We had one with the library, we got, if we got a ballot on the highway coming up, and we're going to do one on having to do with rent control or whatever, you know, these ballots cost a lot of money. In the meantime, Pacific has the worst-looking city build, the worst-looking city buildings in San Mateo County. I mean, so I think that we really need to give consideration where we're going to be putting our, putting in our money, the city's money. For instance, the last time I was here at this council meeting, a couple weeks ago, there was a bunch of, part of the ceiling fell out on the walkway around, right out along here, it takes you into the entryway, part of the ceiling fell, and all this stuck going stuff, crumble, fell right down onto the ground. I just stepped over it. But it's just the idea that, you know, we, we get thrown money into these ballots, and the cities, and buildings are crumbling, they got paint, paint flaking off and everything. So, any rate, take a lot of time in considering any ballot in the future, that's all. Thank you.
And Cindy Abbott, and Cindy's is the last card I have.
Hello, Cindy Abbott, and I'm, I'm just going to reiterate what some other people have said, but with a different twist. A quote that is really important to me is that "An informed citizenry is at the heart of a dynamic democracy," and some others have brought that thought and theme up tonight. At this time, though, we don't have enough information here for the City of Pacifica and our citizens to make an informed decision. After years of requests to come up with alternatives to Highway One widening, council has just approved that a few months ago. So we're now at a point where we can finally see what some of those alternatives can do with intelligent switching, with new interest from SAM Trans about buses and things, and new carpooling apps that are out there by the droves and that are successfully being used in other cities. You can see in areas like Brisbane where scoops being used to pick people up, get people to businesses, there's a lot more ways to pick people than existed before. So the time is right now to have these conversations, not to put something on the ballot to vote on them, but to bring this information and these matters really out to the people and to understand what our options are. We've done that recently on other votes where people didn't have correct information. So I'd like to see us spend the next many months talking about alternatives, as well as talking about how in so many places, widening highways does not alleviate congestion. That's a proven fact. It's in SAM Trans reports, it's in Caltrans reports, that we need to look at other ideas. So I hope that tonight we will not vote on putting Highway One widening on the ballot. Thanks.
Okay, and Cynthia Knowles? Cynthia's the last card.
It's a pleasure to address you all. I would just like to support the study of alternatives. I know that it was approved, but I would just like you all to know that there's active citizens working to, working with SAM Trans to talk to residents of Pacifica and residents along the coast to basically see what their transit needs are. So we're working with SAM Trans, your own citizens are doing that, and we hope to keep working with them to offer more efficient, more frequent service, and meet the transit needs of Pacificans and coast-siders, so that we do not have to add more cars to the road, only have, we are, to add more cars to the road, only just to increase congestion just because there's a widening. It's not really going to solve anything. I think everyone's already said that. I just want to show, to express support for alternatives and let you know that Pacificans are working to address the problem in a healthier way, a healthier way that reduces congestion on the road, gets cars off the road, and it costs the city less, and is protecting our air. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other cards out there? Freedom, number eight, Highway One widening. Freedom, number eight, Highway 1 widening. Okay, close the public hearing, bring it back to council. Does anybody want to make a statement? Questions to staff? Sue Vatalaus?
I have a question of the staff. Are there any current lawsuits against Pacifica and the highway widening at this time?
There is one lawsuit. It's a state complaint, not, we're not involved in the federal lawsuit. And we are still awaiting a final decision from the judge. We have a tentative, but not a final.
Okay. Someone else can go ahead.
Any other comments?
Okay, so I'm just probably, you're going to hear a lot of the same stuff. I don't believe there's been any groundswell support for highway widening. It may have been a contentious issue. It's not as much anymore. People see it as have us already having had two elections in the last five years, having had highway alternatives as a major platform, alternatives. And in my opinion, the people have clearly spoken against highway widening. I've seen grassroots organizations pop up in opposition to the widening, many of which are here tonight. So I've seen, I've seen maybe one or two folks, a couple articles in the Tribune in support of widening, but other than that, I've not seen any large group of people getting together to say, "Yeah, we're for the highway." I just don't believe that there's enough of, of a support for, for rent. You see support, you see opposition. I don't see this in, in this area. We've already directed staff to research alternatives and I have no wish to redirect city staff to spend time drafting a ballot measure. We've already been approved for first level alternatives for congestion management for this NSYNC traffic light at two intersections. The judge invalidated the final impact report. There's no environmental approval for the plan. In my opinion, there's no plan. In addition to that, to, to, to put a cap on all this, I'd like to see on a future agenda, a consideration of a letter that I drafted. There you go, if you just pass it out. To Caltrans and San Mateo Transportation Authority, letting them know that for many years, the Calera Parkway widening of Highway 1 in Pacifica has been under consideration. This project's been highly controversial locally with twice as many Pacificans speaking against the widening as in favor at every opportunity over the years. The Calera Parkway project, despite its substance, did not address important concerns Pacificans have expressed, such as duration of the construction, how long the lanes would be closed for construction. Further to this point, the judge is pending, in a pending, the judge in a pending federal lawsuit brought by local Pacificans and the Center for Biological Diversity ruled that the plan contains violations of the Endangered Species Act. Consequently, the judge invalidated the final environmental, environmental impact report and there's no final project plan. All of these developments indicate that the project was not adequate for implementation. We would like to remove this project as proposed from further consideration. Our city council has directed staff to research alternatives to the highway widening in addition to enacting a city ordinance that any widening would have to be approved by a vote of the people. We ask that the Calera Parkway project to widen Highway 1 be removed from your planning and funding projects. In addition, we would welcome the opportunity for consideration of the use of those funds for implementation of our alternatives such as additional smart traffic signals at two additional intersections, pedestrian overpasses, four-foot emergency shoulder between Raina Del Mar and Fassler, and better public transit and carpool alternatives. Pacifica is interested in alternatives to the widening that would address our traffic problems and remains prepared to work with you to achieve those transportation alternatives. So I'd like us to consider that, sending that letter to Caltrans and San Mateo Transportation Authority at a future meeting. Thank you.
John? I saw your hand moving.
You anticipated.
Yeah, I saw your hand moving.
So I, I'm against putting this on the ballot for all the reasons that folks have said, and I fully favor Deirdre's letter. And I know we can't address it tonight, but we can place it on a future agenda and I would be in favor of that.
Sue'd agree?
All right, this has, there have been a lot of changes. Certainly this, this all started in the 80s. I didn't know much about that, but there have been some changes. For example, public transportation, at one time when we were working or attempting to work with Caltrans regarding some of the alternatives was to get the bus lines to go into the schools, for example, but you were dealing with a contract with school bus services. And so the school bus services contract could not be violated. You could not let public transportation go in those areas. Well, at the moment, as you probably know, there are no school bus contracts of that big number. And I believe in Half Moon Bay, they actually have regular SAM Trans going into the public areas and what I heard tonight, maybe it's actually started here. In 2014, I believe it was October, there was an extensive review of Caltrans and in that extensive review of Caltrans, it was very clearly stated that the widening of, of highways was no longer the, the way to go, that that was passe, that it was not cost effective, and they would, would prefer that they not go in that direction. It's just, it was pretty strong. Going around the county at different meetings and various venues is becoming more and more clear among city council persons in various cities that we need to hone in and be more progressive about getting single drivers out of single cars and that mobility and public transportation is catching on at a much better, broader rate than it was even six years ago. And even at the progress seminar this weekend, we weren't all at the same sub-meetings, but I was at two, in which that was mentioned very clearly, highway widening are passe. So why would the city of Pacifica want to go backwards? So then recall too that a highway widening would involve eminent domain, for the most part, property, property rights. We like to say they're sacred and go into that with timidity because we want to respect property rights. That would involve eminent domain. That would be hardship for businesses and private, and properties. As we know, when we had the creek widening and the rising of the bridge at the south end near the north end of the tunnel, we know what kind of destruct, I wouldn't say destruction, but construction, you know, causing problems, traffic problems. And then you would magnify that. So those are just some practical things of how that would not work and some more recent reasons that widening is passe. So this other big issue is putting it on the ballot without having the multimobility avenues that exist now, the multimobility avenues, the 21st century, shall we say, 2017 knowledge that's out there that we need to investigate for our area is, is like, somebody said a blank check. And people want to be and need to be fully informed. So a ballot measure at this time seems to me would be pretty anemic, that the residents would say, "Well, what are you talking about?" So I think it is definitely premature for anything like that and also caution us not to go backwards and to avoid being in the 21st century. Now, we are fortunate that we do have the intelligent traffic signals allotted. That is measure widening money, part of that pot of money. I was in attendance at the TA meeting and they, fellow council persons from other cities, they got it. They understood that a modern ability of traffic lights to sense when pedestrians were waiting, when a cyclist was waiting, when a car was waiting, that the sensing, not synchronization, sensing that somebody was waiting and how long, that lights would change to accommodate and give you plenty of time to move, and then the lights would go right back to the traffic and let the traffic move. So do we want whizzing through Pacifica or do we want congestion management of keeping the flow going? I would say the smart, modern thing is, the whole county, the whole state has congestion. Let's keep it moving so we're not stuck where we are. The other thing is, I don't know if you realize this, I have mentioned it before, but south of the tunnel, the unincorporated area is working with the county supervisors because they're in control of that, to deliberately slow down traffic, deliberately. So my suggestion would be for us to work with the south of county and to all of us get, instead of Pacifica having two little lights that are censored, have a string of lights, to ask Caltrans and the state to make us a pilot area so let those intelligent lights keep us all moving rather than being stuck because the mid-coast has deliberately closed, shut us, you know, shut us down, but slowed us down. So for all of those reasons, I think it is extremely premature, not advisable at all, and really going backwards to try to put an anemic ballot proposition on for a potential widening.
Sue Vatalaus?
John Keener was the person who said any highway widening should be placed on the ballot. I listened to him and I have, we have talked about this for years and years and years. Yes, let's study the alternatives, but let's not always be blanket on it. It's one way or the other. Maybe there are alternatives. The smart lights, people said, smart lights will not work at peak times. So if we add to the smart lights, is it going to work any better at peak times? It's not, because that's what they told us and they said that's the way it is in all the other cities. Maybe we have a committee to work on this with Caltrans, study the alternatives, and put it on a ballot next year. Put it on the November ballot where more people will vote on it. Let people decide whether they want to widen the highway or not, or what alternatives can be put into place. We have safety issues here. Have you ever been stuck in traffic when someone's trying to go around or seen an ambulance run head-on into a car because they sent them on the other side of the highway because that's the only place they could go? There are definite safety issues and we need to deal with those safety issues before more people get killed.
I actually seconded Sue's motion the other, the last meeting. And basically, my thought process about this is the fact that we have been arguing about this and contentious about this for so many years that this is put a fork in it and decide and make it binding to the council and whatever the people decide. And I just believe it is such a major issue for the city and I believe it's time, the money is available now if we write this letter or if we wait long enough, the money will probably be used by other cities across the, over the hill. And I just think it's time, you know, for Pacifica to make a decision. I am perfectly willing to wait until June of next year when there's the, the scheduled primaries for the governor and whoever else is on the office, but, and put it on the ballot there. That will give time for us to study the effects of the, of the, the lights, the, the new lights. That will also give us time to look at alternatives and have the public hearings about what the people wanted, what, what they want to have as alternatives. And in reference to what Sue agrees said when in the progress seminar, the Highway 1 widening that they were talking about was Highway 101, which there is no, there is no more room to widen it. So they, was not referenced to Highway 1 in general, widening in general, it was about Highway 101 specifically. So I would favor putting it on the June 2018 ballot and we have a discussion, public hearings facilitated by the city with what is the issues people want to talk about, the alternatives people want to talk about, and have an opportunity for the public to decide, do they want it or not want it, up or down? And make that decision and the results of that vote binding on the council, whichever way it goes. So does someone want to, Sue'd agree?
I don't think it's a case of arguing. Yes, if you go back to the history of, of the 1980s and forward, I don't think it's a case of arguing. What, what I'm suggesting is that this is the second decade of the 21st century. Technology and mobility is changing at a rapid rate. We're, I'm talking about an anemic, premature statement. We need time to, to see the different mobilities of where that's going to take our community and every other community. I think we need to spend our staff time and our energies ourselves in working together for robust mobility options that will function in our city. I don't see how we can possibly do that robust connections with the county, other cities with technologies regarding apps for cars, bicycles, you now have e-bicycles, you don't have to pedal up Highway 1, different times to have bicycle trails, yes, the intelligent traffic signals. We're not talking about getting the speeds of 101. We're talking about congestion management to move it, to keep it going. So I don't think we're talking about putting a fork in arguing. I think we're going beyond that and saying, take the time to really study all mobility options, give it time to get in-depth study and let the community be totally part of all of that and know all of that. And that's what I think we're pushing for. What was the other thing? Yes, now, we went to different sessions, so we weren't always in the same session at the progress seminar. And yes, I was in a session where they did talk about the widening of Highway 1 and 101 and how it was restricted in some areas. I'm talking about the concepts of mobility, public transportation, new kinds of apps, and widening any highway. Now, they, they did talk about widening for HOVs on 101. If you want to call that a widening, that wasn't met with total like, oh yeah, mm-mm, not exactly.
I'm going to make a motion. I move that, that we not put highway widening on the ballot, period.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I was going to ask, go ahead, Sue.
So when we say not put Highway 1 on the ballot, period, that is not limiting this council or any other council to...
Not put highway widening on the ballot, period. Yeah.
But my question again is, to not put highway widening on the ballot, was that the total way you expressed that? Does not stop any future time of bringing up the topic again, like for example, after we do all these studies?
Right. It does not, and it does not stop a grassroots group that is in favor of widening from gathering signatures to put it on the ballot. But what it does say is that this city council does not want to put it on the ballot.
I would, although I didn't second it, I would ask you to reconsider and have on the, by your motion of not putting it on the ballot, that sounds like you're contramand, contramanding your, the motion that, this, the ordinance that was passed on March 13th.
Well, if you listen to what I just said, it doesn't stop a grassroots group that is in favor of widening from gathering signatures to put it on the ballot, for instance. It doesn't stop future councils from putting it on the ballot. But what I'm saying is this council says no.
Deirdre?
So also John's motion, so further to that, by agendizing the letter that I have proposed, that would, and sending it off, that would actually stop any future council from voting on this, to, to put it on the ballot, because there would be no more funding for the, the Highway 1. Maybe for alternatives, but not for the widening. So that's just a point of clarification.
Okay, at this point, there's no funding for alternatives now?
They just approved some of our, our funding for the alternatives. So let's just, they have, actually.
Correct. But for those two, for those two lights, but in discussions I had with them is that they would be very, very reluctant to fund other alternatives and to get it, you know, and it seems to me to be, you want to look at the alternatives, but you've already pre-decided this, we are going to do the alternative. this, we are going to do the alternatives, even if they may not work. Like, for instance, I know one of the alternatives is to stagger school hours. Well, the state mandates you have to have X amount of minutes every day in a school day. So if you were to take and have schools start 10 o'clock, let's say, okay? Not every employer is going to allow the parents to come to work late to drop their kid off at school. So you will have the kids being dropped off at daycare, with the parents on the way to work, and because of the state mandate of X amount of minutes per day, you've now put the kids being picked up at school in the afternoon commute. So you've now affected, so that's an alternative that's specious, it doesn't work.
Can I respond to that?
Yeah.
So I hear you loud and clear, I understand it, appreciate it, and it's not what we're talking about, though. It's not. What we're talking about is the actual Calera Parkway widening of Highway 1. The alternatives is separate but related, I will give you that. And I'm not, I'm not clear, you know, cutting, saying, yeah, all the alternatives go forth. But what I am saying is that the Calera Parkway widening of Highway 1 is dead in Pacifica. If there's no more funds, there's no more funds. We'll write grants to do other things. That's what I'm saying. So I still second John's motion.
Okay. Sue Varro?
So you're considering just throwing away that money and not letting it be spent on alternatives?
No, no, when we consider the, the letter, actually, I make a stipulation in there.
You can't stipulate to them what they're going to do with their money.
You can suggest, Sue.
John Keener?
No, Deirdre said.
Okay. Sue DeGree?
Well, I did talk to somebody during the Progress Seminar, and that's only one person, of course, about this, our issue of Highway 1 and alternatives, and so her immediate reaction was, oh, so you would like to redirect the mons? I go, yes. She says, well, we can certainly look into that. So it didn't seem like a very strange, and that member is on the TA, and maybe they don't know the law, but I don't know of any law that says that we can't investigate a request, and that that committee can't deliberate and determine, so the other thing that I'm a little confused is, I don't think this letter has anything to do with our motion, correct?
No, right, you're right.
Okay. So we're, so would you just, once we finish discussion, I would like the motion made one more time, so it's clear to all of us?
Any other discussion? So Deirdre, do you want to, or, John made the motion, sorry.
Could you read the motion back to me?
Councilmember Keener's motion was, do not put highway widening on the ballot.
So, then it was second?
Call for the vote.
Call for vote?
Correct. Does a yes mean yes do not?
Yes means yes do not.
Yes means easier.
You're not.
Just checking.
Okay. That vote, that motion passes three to two. Moving on to the next agenda item.
Can we get, can we talk about getting this on the agenda? Or is it, is it already talked about?
She already.
Toted it, yeah.
Three people already indicated their interest in that, and that should be sufficient.
Okay, so it'll be on the next agenda, the next meeting's agenda?
I, I think maybe later in May.
May 22nd?
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Because the next agenda's kind of packed.
Thank you.
Yeah. I have a request for a break, so we're going to go for a five-minute break. Guess who made the request? Just made the request. I know. I know. Item number eight, and I need, item number nine, adoption of an interim ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pacifica. So, staff report, please, if you wish to speak, please submit a yellow card. Staff report, please.
Yes, so at the April 10th council meeting, the council considered putting placing on the November 2017 special election ballot, a proposed rent stabilization and just cause for eviction ordinance. At the time, the council directed staff to continue that item until the May 8th agenda, so that staff can consider all the public comments that were received regarding the ordinance. At that same meeting, the council did introduce an interim ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium on residential rent increases, as well as providing for just cause for evictions within the city. The, following deliberations on April 10th, the staff did make some minor revisions to the ordinance to reflect notice, as well as termination provisions, and those are reflected in the staff report. Council determined at the time that, given their consideration of a proposed rent stabilization ordinance to be placed on the November 28, 2017 ballot, that it was necessary to adopt this interim ordinance in order to prevent exorbitant rent increases, and in fact, even since the adoption of the interim ordinance, staff understands that there have been certain rent increases that have been noticed since April 10th. So staff has estimated there's about 2,288 units that will be impacted by this interim ordinance. There are certain units that are exempt from this moratorium. They are single-family dwellings, duplexes, mobile homes, and accessory dwelling units. While it is a temporary moratorium on certain residential rent increases, it does not prohibit all rent increases, it simply limits those increases to the CPI index, which is approximately 3.4 percent that's contained in the moratorium. It also is a moratorium of a temporary nature. It will terminate by its own terms, either depending upon the circumstances at the certification of the election results, or if a measure is adopted by the voters, it will terminate on the effective date of the ordinance for rent stabilization or just cause. I am available to answer any questions, if you have any. That concludes my report. So the recommended action tonight is to adopt the ordinance, which would then go into effect 30 days following adoption, which would be May 24th.
John?
Those minor changes that you referred to, were those the, the changes that were directed by council?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And if you'd like, I can go through them.
Oh.
Nope, they're in the staff report, though.
Yep.
Any other comments from staff or council? Okay, open up the public hearing. I'd like to remind everybody that it's two-minute time limit per speaker, and everybody's been really good tonight, so let's keep the good behavior up, and no plotting, booing, catcalling, or anything like that, okay? So first up is Cynthia Kaufman, next Jeff Lamont, and Brent Turner.
I wanted to applaud the council and also really thank the city staff for working on this. I think it's really, really important. I know the first time that we started talking about rent control in this town, we were flooded with people from out of town who don't live here, and, and who've been mobilized by Samcar that has a lot of financial interest in, in what's going on here. And one of the things that they were saying was that we don't need rent control because our landlords are really decent, and I want to say, there are a lot of really decent landlords in Pacifica, but I am horrified, truly horrified, by the rent increases that I'm hearing about, that people, you know, people just, you know, from one month to the next have gotten, I just heard just right now of two examples of $600 rent increases. That's going to wash people out of this town, and I think it's horrendous. And it really is ridiculous, because I think you're going to probably hear from some people who say, it's because of rent control. It is not because we're trying to put some stabilization into our community that people are getting rent increases, it's because people are greedy, and I really appreciate people standing up to that power. Thank you.
Jeff Lamont, Brent Turner, Dave Rosenheim.
We have less.
Oh, okay. Brent Turner, Dave Rosenheim, Chuck Battigan.
Hello, City Council. My name is Brent Turner. I've been here before providing testimony and wanted to again note, I come from a real estate family. My grandmother was Realtor of the Year in Daly City. I, in the 40s, I have to confess, I do live in Half Moon Bay, but I consider this the coside, and I do business here. I think it should be noted that airlines and hospitals share in something that's common to being a landlord. I'm a landlord and a real estate broker myself, and that government has an interest in protecting citizens against what I term bullying. I think we've all seen on the, in the air, world of airline services, there's been some issues going on. The attempts that we've heard locally to stick it to the underdog public is apparent, and I think is very telltale of this issue, and I believe that the government must even the playing field here. This is the highest and best use for government, and again, the compassionate Realtors stand with the nurses, the teachers, the disabled, the emergency service providers, the veterans, and their children, and we appreciate your efforts here. We hope you, that you pass the moratorium, and that the ballot measure includes a rollback of these bad increases. Thank you.
Dave Rosenheim, Chuck Battigan, and Gilinda.
Hi, I'd like to thank the council for taking up this important issue. My name's David Rosenheim, I'm a homeowner in Pacifica. I emailed, I think, each of you yesterday. As Cynthia brought up at the beginning, the prospect of this issue has resulted in rents going up drastically. My mother-in-law lives in the apartments at 360 Talbot, and she, along with other residents there, saw an increase as of April 1st of seven and a half percent, and then were notified last week of an increase of 40 percent. My mother-in-law is a senior citizen, she has terminal cancer, her doctors and her support system are, our family, are here. This rent increase will force her out. The moratorium actually won't help those people who already saw their rents completely immorally jacked up in the last week, and I don't really know what the solution is. But I would encourage the, the council to look at some type of retroactive moratorium to protect those vulnerable people. Thank you.
Chuck Battigan, Gilinda, Mark Clausen.
Good evening, my name is Chuck Radigan, and I'm a property owner in the Manor District. Like about 80% of the speakers at the last few meetings that I've attended, I've implored this, the city council to consider alternatives to adopting a full-blown rent control system in Pacifica. As a former San Francisco landlord, I've experienced the nightmares of a rent control system, especially one that has been in place for many years. As a Pacifica landlord, I'm already deeply discounting my rents to provide affordable housing to my longer-term tenants. Please understand that while 100% of tenants would like to pay less rent, and 100% of owners would like to collect more rent, it is only a subset of tenants that should be classified as truly needy, and a subset of owners who should be classified as able to afford the tenant subsidies. That's why I think a mediation system, which would be far less expensive and less cumbersome to the city, should be considered and makes so much more sense. There's a question regarding whether the rent control measure should be placed on a special election ballot. Let me explain by example why it should not be on the ballot. Imagine that there were a measure put on the ballot at the next, next national election. The measure would have the government confiscate virtually all the money of the 10 wealthiest people in the country, and divide it equally among the remaining people in the country. Well, that would amount to about $2,000 per person, and I believe that that measure would pass with a vote of over 80% and a record turnout. My point is that the people, a lot of people, vote with their pocketbooks, especially when they have a high personal stake. That's why getting the measure on Pacifica's ballot, ballot, the Pacifica City Council needs to, needs to vote on it first. Your critical line of defense, not all public policy decisions are appropriate to be determined by a public vote, especially not the kind of blanket redistribution that gives one group's money to another group. Thank you.
Thank you. Gilinda, Mark Clausen, Mike Haddock.
Hi, I'm Gilinda, I live in Burlingame, and, but I do own a rental property in Pacifica. And I can't think of anything that would put a stranglehold, more of a stranglehold on the supply of affordable housing than to get a draconian, you know, rent control measure. And, you know, we, I think you need to worry about, you know, the supply as much, because it's not going to do, not going to help a lot if a few people, and I know I'm exaggerating, but if, you know, a smaller group of people have it good with affordable, you know, with rent control, but there's no availability for others that want to live here. So I think it would be a bad idea to enact rent control. Thanks.
Mark Clausen, Mike Haddock, Lisa Rose Johnson.
Hi, I'm Mark Clausen, I'm a Pacifica resident, and I own rental property, and I manage rental property for other people. And the only thing that this moratorium is actually doing is it's hurting your good landlords, and, because your smaller landlords, which I think you'll find, I don't know if the staff has looked to see how many, with the mixes of those units, but I think a large number of them are smaller units, four units, three units, eight units. And not all units are created equal. So, for instance, I have one we're managing, and you put this ordinance in, I can't raise the rent more than 3.4%, and the rents on that building are actually artificially very low, and we've tried to do that, but now we have good 35, 50,000, we don't know, we're kind of exploring the dry rot on the building, but I have no means during this seven-month period to really raise my rents to where they should be. And we've been raised 8% on our sewer tax, but I'm limited to 3.4% based on a consumer index that has really nothing to do with how you run a property. And so you're basically hurting people. One of the people I manage for is in this room tonight, he's 96 years old. He, I think his income's about $1,700 a month. He depends on that building for, for his place, and where he stays, if he moves into a, to an assisted living, is going to be increased at a much greater rate than what you're allowing him to increase on his building, which is actually below market. So what you're really doing is, you're taking buildings eventually off the market, because it's just not going to be profitable. You just can't make it work. So I would ask that you would consider not putting this on the ballot, and coming up with some sort of means in which you reward the good landlords. Thank you.
Mike Haddock, Lisa Rose Johnson, and Susan Lewis.
To the three council members intent on ramming through this property control measure despite the overwhelming opposition, and the hardcore socialum it would inflict on Pacifica, you base your need to do so on unfair rents. Well, we haven't seen that proof. Show us the graph or the pie chart to substantiate those grossly false and partisan claims. We know that won't be forthcoming, as housing providers offer rents well below actual costs. Marching to the step of Daniel Saver and his socialist followers masked as a religious group, who inflict hate and divisiveness in communities all over the Bay Area, their socialist agenda will lead Pacifica to a place resembling that that our far-fathers fled to live in a free country of liberty and property rights upon which our democracy is based. Renters are not only customers of housing providers, but also our good friends and our neighbors. Your very desperate and false claim that renters are being intimidated by providers to not be heard is totally ludicrous and demonstrates the degree of divisiveness already generated by some council members. If you have the fix-in and are intent on punishing the hard-working, productive members of this community by attaching the tentacles of socialism to them, I hope you are. to them, I hope you are pledging your own 401Ks to the City General Fund. This will prove your conviction to socialism, and funding the immediate and lasting negative financial impact the city will suffer. It would only be fair and fitting, as you would be stealing the 401Ks of all those invested in Pacifica. Is this your America? Thank you.
Alicia Rose Johnson, Susan Lewis, and Tiger.
Hi, thank you. I believe that most of the people in the world are really good people, and there's a minority of people that are really lousy people. And the same thing goes with landlords, and the same thing goes with tenants. So you see, we hear all these stories about the bad landlords, and we hear all the story about the bad tenants. Property control does not work. I think Pacifica needs to build, and build houses for the people that need it, workforce housing, just like they're doing all over the counties. They're building workforce housing, affordable housing. People that truly need it, and know they need it, they need affordable housing, not other people's housing. Thank you.
Susan Lewis, Tiger, and Dever Gold.
It's springtime. It's time to talk baseball. Did you ever notice that the pitcher covers the ball and never, ever shows the ball to the batter until the last possible instance? In baseball, that's part of the sport. In politics, it's called corruption. City Council, you are covering the ball and not being forthcoming about your actions. Why have you not made both your unfair moratorium and your grossly unfair ordinance readily available and published in a timely fashion for all to see? Moratorium means death. The details of the unfair moratorium show what it will bring to Pacifica. Unfortunately, stagnation and death. The very few who have read the moratorium know it will not address the two primary concerns: lack of sub-market rentals and an incentive to provide more housing. Is the city council working on behalf of most of the citizens, or not? Are we on the same baseball team, or not? You are throwing a concealed pitch. It is not about helping those who struggle. It is a statewide attempt to control all private property. State laws are changing. Single-family homes, duplexes, condos, and townhomes will not be exempt. Not exempt. These ordinances are a lawyer's ATM dream. The only beneficiaries of such litigation is the lawyers. The wording creates needless conflict. It requires good, responsible renters to suffer, while the few bad renters cannot be removed. The quality of life for all but the lawyers will be ruined. The proposed rent adjustments yield no fair return, but cause owners to go out of business and buildings to stand vacant. The temporary moratorium is a foot in the door. It can and will be changed and made permanent. San Francisco's temporary ordinance has been amended over 200 times since 1979. And oh, September surprise. A 25-page ordinance will never go to a public ballot. Why bother? You already have what you want. Theft of property by political edict. There is no fair shot for owners. It is an automatic triple play. City Council, almost done, just like a sneaky pitcher.
Your time is up.
You're hiding the baseball from the people. Your actions are disingenuous and unfair.
Your time is up.
Everyone is a loser.
Tiger, Dever Gold, and Victoria Becker.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I am Tiger Jazz Twirl's Big Stick of Pacifica. I found that every time I began to process and articulate my thoughts, they quickly degenerated due to a swell of anger that came upon me almost every time. So I'm going to talk more about myself than my current feelings about all of you regarding this specific topic. I am someone whose natural approach is to listen to what everyone, without exception, has to say before referring back to any preconceived notions I might hold. For example, when someone tells me that their honest, hard-earned livelihood is tied up in a property they own, that they're trying to be a good landlord, and that if they're about to be told by their government how to run their own land, they'll have to raise rents to reflect market prices so that they can keep some kind of relative control over their own property, I hear them when they tell me that. I don't do easy answers, and it's very difficult to rope me into an us versus them mentality. Also, I am a renter. I represent renters on the Rent Advisory Task Force. I volunteer regularly with the Pacifica Resource Center. I have spoken at this podium many times about the fact that there is a great deal of uncertainty in my mind as to whether or not I will be able to continue to stay in this community I have lived in my entire life, since the cost of rent is what it is. As someone whose community activism tends to revolve around the question of affordable living in this town, here's the non-incredibly angry version. Given the $600 a month increases I've seen come down the pike this week, right now, I am really sincerely and truly grateful that I am not one of the people this council is trying to help with this moratorium and this ordinance, given the way they have approached it so far.
Dever Gold, Victoria Becker, Thyra Knutson.
Hi. I appreciate that you voted for the moratorium. I am sorry that there are landlords who took advantage of the delay of the requirement for a second reading and the delay in adoption to jack up people's rents. I sincerely hope that when this goes to a ballot measure that you will be able to put a rollback on to the time it was first brought up, because I think that is just unconscionable. Pacifica has the misfortune, somebody figured it out, that you can get on 35, and get onto 280, and be in Silicon Valley in an hour. So unfortunately, we are now, people who are renting in Pacifica, are competing with tech people who are making 200 and 300,000 dollars a year. Rent stabilization offers to protect a very small proportion, or 58% of our rental population in Pacifica. This is an important population to maintain the diversity of our community. Me, I'm a homeowner. I've been a renter most of my life. Now I get to pay a fixed amount of rent to Wells Fargo, and it can't go up. And I pay, the rate of my property tax increases is limited by law. And even if my sewer goes up, and even if something else goes up, I'm not being asked to absorb a 50% increase, a 40% increase, a 60% increase. I urge you to vote yes on this second reading, to go forward with a ballot measure that will protect as many renters as we can, and preserve the diversity of our community. Thank you.
Victoria Becker, Thyra Knutson, and Brian Adler.
I just want the council to continue to support rent stabilization, the moratorium, the temporary moratorium on raising rents exorbitantly, and just cause eviction. All this talk about all the landlords are so good, it's the, all the good landlords, there are no bad landlords, that's over and over again disproved that people, when they have a chance, take advantage and raise rents. It's got, it's got to be, there has to be some kind of way of keeping renters from being driven out of Pacifica.
Thyra Knutson, Brian Adler, and Michael Doltz.
Hi. I just want to say to please research this more. I do not agree with rent control. I'm not sure how much information you've got regarding rent control. Maybe go into some of the other cities that have taken rent control. Look at them. Speak to both the owners, the landlords, and the tenants, and see what the pros and cons are. I see a lot of people that are wanting rent control here, but I don't think they've actually gone into these properties that are under these restrictions. So I think there's a lot more research that does need to be done. I was encouraged when the previous meeting, you were going to have a committee researching these pros and cons, speaking to landlords and the tenants. That was dissolved. I didn't hear anything more about what the outcome was, what the information was. As a landlord, I haven't been contacted by anybody. Even my tenants speak to people in the real life, look at what rent control does to these properties. It doesn't work.
Brian Adler, Michael Doltz, Ellen Haig.
Good evening, council members. My name is Brian Adler, and I'm a property owner in Pacifica, urging you to vote no on this moratorium. I manage property in both non-rent-controlled San Mateo County and rent-controlled San Francisco. I can speak from firsthand experience of the destructive effects of rent control, particularly on small property owners like myself, who are the majority of landlords here in Pacifica. Although small property owners are sympathetic to those finding it difficult to obtain housing, the burden of solving the problem should not be shoulder solely by owners, nor should we be led to believe that rent control is the only solution to the problem. There are others. I find it particularly onerous that mom-and-pop owners of rental property are disproportionately affected by rent control. Small property owners are the majority of owners in Pacifica, and we are small business owners who provide the valuable service of housing. We operate our buildings as members of the community, employing local carpenters, painters, and other professionals. We deal with tenants directly as our neighbors, with a vested interest in making this a better place to live. When rent control measures are enacted, this deteriorates. We are disproportionately affected because of increased costs of bureaucracy and an inability to keep up with price inflation necessary to maintain a good place for people to live. I mentioned that rent control is not the only solution here. The city of Pacifica feels the need to help people who are truly in need with housing. Then money from a voter-approved fund should be used to subsidize those who truly need it. Small property owners should not be singled out and given the burden of fixing a problem they didn't create. The entire community, owners and renters, need to hear the cost, bear the cost of this problem. Please vote against this destructive moratorium, and work for a fair solution to the community's housing needs. Let the voters decide on a solution to this problem. Having five council members here tonight decide the business of control is...
Your time is up. Thank you. Michael Doltz, Ellen Haig, Suzanne Moore.
Good evening again. I'm Michael Doltz. I live in the Manor District of Pacifica. When I grew up, I was in Santa Cruz, and I swore that I would always move back to Santa Cruz. Then after high school, I joined the Navy, and that took me to the East Coast for a number of years. When I moved back to California, I came to Pacifica. And at that point, I swore I would never live anywhere other than Pacifica. I love the community here, and it's full of wonderful people. It is getting increasingly difficult, though, for people to live here, partly due to the rent increases. I know I hear a lot about the good landlords, and there are a number of good landlords here. One of the problems, though, is the big businesses that come in. I'm a former resident of Pacific Skies Estates. What happened there was that they wanted to move everyone out so that they could start charging double to triple the rent that was going on, or that people were already paying. Part of the other facet of this rent stabilization is the just cause for eviction. Since there was nothing like that in place at that time, everyone at Pacific Skies Estates was relocated and evicted. And so that's why it now sits vacant, because they can't go on with their project to improve the units, replace the units, and that means they can't get the rent that they want. But that is 84 units, well, minus six, that are homeowners there. So numerous units that are now vacant, and all those people from my community were displaced, because there is nothing protecting renters. Thank you.
Ellen Haig, Suzanne Moore, Daniel Saber.
Good evening. I'm Ellen Haig. I'm a longtime homeowner in Pacifica, and I'm also a member of Faith in Action and Fair Rents for Pacifica. Thank you for voting at the last city council meeting for a temporary moratorium, to provide renter protection for members of our community. Now, I'm afraid we need an emergency ordinance, given the exorbitant increases in rents in the last two weeks. I urge you once again to vote in favor of a retroactive emergency moratorium. This past weekend, we celebrated Earth Day in Pacifica. Our community came together to honor and protect our beautiful town, and to recognize the need for preservation and sustainability of our planet. My hope is that we might also come together to respect and protect our neighbors and the diversity of our community. We can do that with the temporary moratorium in November by adopting the proposed Pacifica Community Preservation, Rent Stabilization, and Renters' Rights Act. Thank you very much.
Suzanne Moore, Daniel Saber, Hada Martinez, or Hoda Martinez.
My name is Suzanne Moore, Pacifica resident, homeowner, and a member of Fair Rents for Pacifica. I support the ordinance on rent stabilization, and I support the temporary moratorium limiting rent increases, no cause evictions, protecting tenants during the time of public debate and community vote. Sadly, within the last few days of the council announcing consideration of the moratorium, tenants in Pacifica reported sizable rent increases. Some in this room say the increases are unintended consequences of the rent stabilization ordinance. I know these increases are entirely the choice of the landlord, and that the sizable increases are unfair, unjust, and cruel. I recommend that any Pacifica tenant who has received a rent increase since January 1st, contact San Mateo County Legal Aid, and contact Fair Rents for Pacifica at our website. For those under financial and emotional distress, contact the Pacifica Resource Center. These resources may be supportive during this crisis. To our Pacifica City Council, including our very respected Sioux degree, I implore you to improve these ordinances and apply a rollback date on the ballot measure. Surely, it is apparent that high rents, evictions, and displacement have negatively impacted public health, education, and transportation in our community. Community is not merely defined by geographic location and boundaries. It is the foundation of support for its members to study, work, worship, live, grow, and to participate in the maintenance of that community. The community and its members are interdependent. Please fulfill your duty as our elected council members and protect this community we love. Vote in favor of this moratorium this evening. Thank you.
Daniel Saber, Hoda Martinez, and Carolyn Jaramillo.
Hi, my name is Ada Martinez. I am a resident here in Pacifica. I'm a renter in 360 Talbot. And another one of my roles in our town is the new youth minister for Good Shepherd Church of Oceana Boulevard. I've been just currently hit with a $500 increase in my unit. Some other tenants in our building have been hit with an even higher increase in rent. And some of the occupations of the tenants in my building, I'll start off with myself. I'm a design assistant. It's an entry-level job in the fashion design world. It won't be another three to five years until I'm able to move up in my career. I'm on a career path. But that doesn't mean that I am able to come up with a $500 difference to pay my rent and stay in my home. Some other tenants in my building are hairdressers, music instructors, service workers that cannot afford these, you know, 30, 40% increases in our rent. I urge you to vote to include and add this moratorium, and I do urge that you consider a backlog for the ordinance. What I'm facing personally is homelessness, and it's, makes me very emotional to say that, because I cannot afford to move, cannot afford the rent anywhere else, and I definitely cannot afford this rent increase that I'm facing. So please vote yes. Thank you.
Daniel Saber, Carolyn Jaramillo, Denny Aznis. Okay. Carolyn Jaramillo.
Good evening. I'm Carolyn Harmio. I am a retired public school teacher, and I've owned a home here in Pacifica for 30 years. Tonight, I want to dispel one of the myths about rent stabilization that is being widely disseminated. The myth, and I want to read it so that I make sure I have it correct, states that rent control will artificially destroy home values in Pacifica. I fail to see how a rent protection will hurt the value of my home, how a rent ordinance that will protect some of my friends and neighbors, give them freedom from a rent burden, and give them protection from unjust evictions. I fail to see how... I fail to see how that will in any way jeopardize my home value. Also, I'm very suspicious this evening, knowing that when councilmember Sue DeGree voted to support an advisory task force, there were no accusations made against her then. So I urge you tonight not to be taken in with some of the myths that are being disseminated. I urge you to adopt an ordinance, an interim ordinance, that will establish a temporary moratorium on rent increases. Thank you.
Denny Asness, Linda S., and Susan Arms.
Good evening. I want to support a council vote for the temporary rent stabilization and just cause for eviction ordinance. It's so important to provide support and some relief to renters struggling to live in Pacifica, some of whom are being subjected to debilitating rent increases, as you've just heard. The ordinance will help renters and will demonstrate that Pacifica is a city that wants to remain diverse and compassionate. This is an issue that renters and concerned homeowners like myself support, providing temporary relief to Pacifica renters. I am not narrowly advocating for my Pacifica, but for our Pacifica, one that cares about a diversity of residents, one that shows understanding and caring for all who live here. This is part of my dream for Pacifica. As a retired teacher, I am also greatly concerned by the fact that Pacifica teachers are being priced out of the community, which has a huge impact on the whole educational system here. I urge the council to vote yes on this ordinance. Thank you.
Linda S., Susan Arms, and then Brandon Denman. Linda S.? Oh, sorry.
Got it right this time. Here we are again. When do we get regulations? We get them because of bad acts. The Ohio River catches on fire and burns for weeks, we get the EPA.
Could you put the microphone a little closer to your... Thank you.
Workers are sick or disabled, we get OSHA. Now we get $500 increases, $600 rent increases. What do you think that's going to bring down? I mean, you people do yourselves in with increases like this. Why does this happen? And when did this need for money become greed? Homeowners have lots of programs to help them. One of the biggest was Prop 13. While I pay taxes through my rent, I get nothing for it. I'd like to have a Prop 13 for renters. It's only fair, and this would limit our increases too, and one of the main expenses of property owning. Uh-oh. Bullying. This group that's here tonight is huge. Tenants, we don't have the resources. We don't have the money. The property people spend millions to defeat things like this. We need to be able to vote on it as a group. The public needs to be able to vote. They need to get the facts. They don't need to get the disinformation that's provided by the property people every time. It seems like they ought to be fined or something every time they provide this disinformation. It's just not fair. They get it all, whatever they want. The money talks in this country, and it's gotten really bad. The attack on Sue DeGree tonight, what a desperate, desperate act and disgusting. You people should be ashamed of yourselves to bring up something like that to someone who's worked so hard for us. Vote. Let us vote. It's the American way.
Susan Arms, Brandon Denman, and Mary Bona. And you're not Susan?
No.
Okay. Are you Brandon?
Yes, I'm Brandon Denman. And I'm a Pacifica resident and homeowner, also a local realtor, property manager, and a landlord as well. I own properties here in Pacifica as well as in San Francisco, so I'm very familiar with rent control and how it does horrible things for the community. There are some aspects of rent control that are good. However, that's why I'm urging you to look at alternatives to just passing this ordinance. I think that what needs to be looked at is, there's, I could go on and on with problems of rent control, and many people have already spoken to that. The one thing that really hasn't been discussed is, how are we going to pay for this rent control? There has to be a full-time board that there is in San Francisco. Do you know how much money it costs for that board to be run properly? If we run a board and it's run improperly, it's going to be a mess. So if we run this board properly, the cost is going to be way more than the city of Pacifica can handle. And everybody here in this room right now is, has a common thread of wanting to make Pacifica better, but making Pacifica bankrupt does not make it better. So please do not vote for this. Thank you.
Mary Bona, Shanti, and Gerald Miller. Mary Bona, Shanti?
Okay, on the interim ordinance, we have just cause for eviction and rent stabilization. I've spoken on rent stabilization many times, so I'm going to keep this with just cause for eviction for the most part. Now, just cause for eviction, there's been a lot of propaganda being spread around that this is going to keep gangsters in the apartment, that you won't be able to evict drug dealers. We don't have any gangsters in Pacifica. We don't even have any righteous wannabes. Drug dealers? Lindemar is one of the few beaches in California where you can go and there is no hypodermic needles on that beach. There is no empty bags of meth or coke. Drug dealers, I haven't seen any around here, so this isn't an issue. And if you do have a drug dealer, it's really easy to call the police and have them evicted. This is just sidestepping the real issue of just cause for eviction. Just cause for eviction puts an end to homophobic and racist evictions. Unfortunately, this is America, and everyone should be treated equally, but that just isn't the case without just cause. It is way too easy for a landlord to look at someone and say, "Well, there's a black man with a lot of people going into his house. He must be a drug dealer." And as long as you don't state why you evicted him, you can do this. You can literally get evicted for being black, brown, or LGBT, because unfortunately, the religious zealots just don't stop. So what just cause does is it really puts a fairness on this, and it makes it so you have to actually list the reason for evicting someone. Now, let's keep this moving. Tenants, here's a term that we see kicked around a lot. Now, we all know what a tenant is, but who are the tenants? Over 70% of the white people in America are homeowners. African Americans, barely over 40%. Latinos, same thing, barely over 40%. So the majority of renters are minorities. This is the group that has not been protected by the government throughout history, and so all that we're asking is that you give the certain sect of minorities the protections that the homeowners receive. Thanks.
Gerald Miller, Susan Michelson, and Choya Gordon.
Yes, hi. Hi, I'm Gerald Miller. I grew up in Pacifica, and I'm proud to be able to rent out the home that I raised my son in for half his childhood. I still treat my tenants as if, I still treat my house as if I'm living in it and take pride in my home. Pacifica is lucky to have so many mom-and-pop landlords like my wife and myself that feel like our tenants are our friends, not just money makers for us. We provide a valuable service for those who have not been able to be homeowners yet. Renters should have rights, and I agree with that, but what about the landlord's rights? If I understand a proposal right and I wanted or needed to sell my property that I could not, I'm a prisoner to still being a landlord. Or the other option is that I have to pay tens of thousands of dollars to have that tenant move out. Is that fair? I don't think so. Following this logic, landlords have more money, so therefore, they should share with others who don't. So I ask you and the board, if you have more money because you've saved for 40 years of your life, should you then pay half of that to the others that don't have as much? That's not a fair proposal. I really believe that that has to be looked at in just cause evictions. Yes, we need to be fair about evictions and not on other things as other gentlemen said about race or anything else. Of course, it has to be fair, but to have to pay someone thousands of dollars, not talking about thousands, tens of thousands of dollars, just so you can have the right to sell your property is not fair. Thank you.
Suzanne Michelson, Choya Gordon, and Michelle MacIntyre.
Hi, my name is Suzanne Michelson. I'm a long-term Pacifica resident. I vote here. I live here. I raised my family here. It's frustrating to watch the council and other people that have spoken say that everyone who is here that is against rent control doesn't live here. I do live here. I do vote here. It's important to me. I want you to understand that it's not just out-of-town interests that are against rent control in Pacifica. Thank you.
Choya Gordon, Michelle MacIntyre, and Brian Ponti.
Good evening again. I support the interim ordinance and for the reasons that a number of people have stated. I think it's also really important to roll back these recent extremely unjust rent increases that we've been hearing about. There is a 1995 state law, state rent stabilization law in California, and the proposed ordinance and interim ordinance have to be in accord with that. It does not apply to single-family homes or to units built after 1995. So far, the sky has not fallen. I think that's really important to remember because we've heard a lot of misinformation. The current proposed ordinance and interim ordinance are not extreme. They're actually extremely reasonable, and they are not as strong as the state law. And that was done, as I understand, intentionally to make concessions to get this passed in Pacifica. And the cost would be paid by the renters. Recent developments, as a few people have referred to in the Bay Area, the tech center of the world has led to incredible income inequality. And although housing should be a basic human right, it's often one of the first things that goes when people lose their jobs and can't afford to pay their rent. I would like to ask of the pro-realtor people who have spoken tonight, how many of them? How much of the opposition here are from Pacifica? Certainly not all of them. And in terms of saving the dream, this isn't my dream to evict people who are retired, disabled, veterans, and lose their home for unjust reasons.
Your time is up, Choya.
Thank you.
Michelle MacIntyre, Brian Ponti, and HOILEUNG.
Hello, my name is Michelle MacIntyre, and I own a home in Pacifica. I used to have a rent-controlled apartment in San Francisco. Leading up to the dot-com boom, the elderly lady that owned the building needed to sell for medical reasons. So I found myself out on the street looking for another apartment. I was shocked to see that in the five years I had been protected by rent control, that rents had tripled in San Francisco. I looked around, trying to find another place to rent, and found Pacifica. I believe Pacifica had units available because there was no rent control. I got together with my roommates that I rented with in Pacifica, and we decided to put our money together and buy a home. So I urge you not to do rent control because it gives a false sense of protection to people that are in it. You're not permanently, you do not permanently have that. So, thank you.
Brian Ponti, HOILEUNG, and then Gloria Leong, LEUNG.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm here tonight to ask that you not move forward with this ordinance. This is a terribly one-sided piece of legislation that will not only decimate many small investors but will likely not resolve the underlying problem, which is the imbalance of housing and jobs in the greater Bay Area. I ask instead that you defer action on this ordinance and instead allow the committee you appointed to continue their work and to find well-thought-out and balanced solutions to this problem. One very likely consequence of this legislation will be decreased property values and the corresponding lower property tax revenue for your general fund and for the school districts that overlap with the city of Pacifica. There are better solutions to be had. Thank you for your time.
And Ms. Leong?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Gloria. I want to say no rent control to Pacifica. Please, please look at Oakland and San Francisco. There's more rental units out of the rental market now. People are hard to find a place to live. It just kills time and money because it's not good to both sides of landlords and tenants. Please vote no, 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 rent control to Pacifica. Thank you.
And I guess you're Mina?
Yes. My name is Mina Young. I was looking at around the room, and I see seniors, a lot of seniors, regardless whether they are tenants or owners. You know, tenants speak as if the owners never get old, but we all in it together. We're all the same population. So it's not fair to make one senior to take care of another senior. My father is 86, and he just had dementia overnight, and I just lost my job after 24 years of service, and my employer did not think twice. You know, anybody can lay you off anytime. The city could lay off people when it's bad time. So my father, I just talked him to the doctor today, and, you know, his co-pay from $10 to $15, just like that. And my mom was arguing with the receptionist, "Why is it $15 now?" You know? And their retirement, they don't have retirement fund. They don't have 401K. The average pay, I mean, the cost for owners is $3,617 based on San Francisco census, and our average expenses have been 66% year-over-year increase from the house. The older the house, the more repair you have to pay, and every time you repair is thousands, tens of thousands of dollars. With just cause, a friend of mine lost her house to a bad tenant who could not pay, who did not pay rent, and she had to get a lawyer, and the lawyer fee is like $300, $400 per hour, and she lost her house to foreclosure because she could not pay. And she still pays, she still owes the lawyer fee. So that's just cause to you. So my dad, when they bought a house, it's like $3 per hour. That's how much they got paid. They had to work three shifts, and then now it's $15.
Your time is up, Ms. Leong. Thank you. HOILEUNG, David Paslin, and Bridget Duffy.
Some people put all of responsibility to landlords. They think landlords make all of the problem. It's not true. Take a look at San Francisco. Because unfair rent control, more than 40,000 houses withdraw from the rental market. The rent in San Francisco is much higher than Pacifica City. If you don't want the Pacifica housing as bad as San Francisco, please do not put rent control here. All of the rent-controlled cities around Pacifica City, their rent much higher than here. Please, no rent control in Pacifica City. Thank you.
David Paslin, and Bridget Duffy, and David Goodwin. David P-A-S-L-I-N. Okay, Bridget Duffy, David Goodwin, Tom Thompson. Bridget Duffy?
Did you call Susan? I'm not Bridget Duffy, but I've been asked to read this into the record. David had to leave, okay? He's asked me to read this. I'm Susan Gatchell Wallace, okay? His letter says, "I am 75 years old and own an apartment building. I must depend on those-" apartments to sustain me when I no longer work. Those apartments required and/or require payment of property taxes, payment of mortgages, payment for onsite management, payment for repairs, payment for maintenance, payment to prepare vacant apartments for re-rental as a partial list. I have a day job. I spend my nights and weekends managing the apartments at 75. If I have a vacancy, I must place advertisements to find a tenant." He goes on, and I want to make sure I can get most of this in. "The freely assigned lease determines the mutual responsibilities of the tenant and the owner. If the agreed lease is for one, two, or three years, then the tenant may enjoy an uninterrupted possession for that time, and often the tenant may occupy the apartment indefinitely." And he goes on with 30-day notice and what have you. What is key here, and what many people do not understand, that the owners try to avoid evictions and avoid vacancies because that's an expense. Rent control does nothing, zero, to increase housing stocks. In fact, it does the opposite. Why would any honest person build or buy apartments to rent in a rent-controlled jurisdiction? He feels it's theft, okay? And he goes in to quote Lincoln in here. So I'd like to have this in the record, okay?
Just give it to the city attorney. Okay, it's over there. And Bridget Duffy, David Goodwin, and Tom Thompson.
Hi. So I've been here a lot. I'm not going to repeat everything I've said, but it's weird that we're hearing alternative facts from this group of people who don't live here, most of them. Some of them do. But they're obviously trying to convince us of something that we know is not true. The landlords of Pacifica are reasonable people. The people who live in Pacifica are pretty reasonable people. We live by the ocean, and there's something about living here that makes us understand that money isn't everything, that the quality of life has a lot to do with a million other things. So please, don't feel bad for the landlords. And I want to repeat a couple of facts. A, this doesn't affect small landlords in Pacifica. It just does not affect small landlords in Pacifica. This affects large landlords, people from out of the country, out of the city, out of the county. We need help, and I also want to remind people of the 2008 financial crisis, which was actually a crime, which never went, got punished, but coincidentally, two years after 2008 and 2010, our rents started doubling, tripling, quadrupling. They are still climbing. And the one help that we did get from our government was overturned. So all I have to say about laws is that laws cannot change a man's heart, but laws can restrain the heartless. And that's what we got here. So please, moratorium.
David Goodwin, Tom Thompson, Robert Sapika, S A P I E K A.
Hello, David Goodwin. Thank you, city council. I live in Pacifica. I'm a resident in Pacifica. I have a rental property in Pacifica. Thank you. You know, I wrote down a whole bunch of stuff, and this ordinance is going to bankrupt our city. $19 a unit is not going to cover the cost. Look at the budgets of the other cities. Just compare them a little bit. You'll see that it's not going to do it. It's not going to lower rents. There is no, nothing in this that's going to lower rents. Your own staff report said that there was only a 1.6% increase in housing units. There was a 5.4% increase in people. That's the numbers right there. It has nothing to do with the cost of rents. It does have something to do with the cost of rents. I had a unit that, two years ago, that was up. I had 30 people each night come. I only had one unit. There were 60 people that wanted that unit. It's a numbers. It's an inventory issue. We need more housing. We need workforce housing. You know, it's not, don't put it on us landlords. I was thinking about buying a eight-unit or something. I was looking into that. I will not now. I don't have the money, the backing, to hire the lawyers and everything else that if there is a problem. You are going to get big businesses in here for those complexes because they're the ones that have the money to back that up. I don't have it. I had a tenant that was in there. I have her below-market rents after three years, and she was late, you know, half a month or so. She was two months late. She finally told me she was moving, middle of the lease, owes me $5,000, and is paying me $200 a month. It's going to take about four years to pay me back. How am I supposed to absorb that?
Tom Thompson, Robert Sapika, S A P I E K A, and Marie Favarini.
Council members, my name is Tom Thompson. I'm a Pacifica property owner and a Pacifica Rent Advisory Task Force member. You're playing with fire here. Just cause eviction means just forget about eviction. Excuse me. Gangs and criminal behavior thrive with just cause eviction. It punishes good neighbors and good property owners. Here's my personal real-life example. I bought a fourplex in Sharp Park. I moved in. Gangs live across the street. It was dangerous. Daily intimidations, daily drug deals, and neighbors lived in fear. As a former probation officer, I put Pacifica PD's direct-dial number on my speed dial. About 100 calls or so later, the Pacifica police couldn't catch them. They used spotters and police scanners to evade the police. When I connected the police with the owners of the property, they were able to force the tenants out. The neighbors thanked me. The children could play again outside. That would have been impossible with just cause eviction because until after you've arrested them and convicted them, you can't get them out. The neighborhood would have remained unsafe. You're playing with fire with just cause eviction. Keep Pacifica safe. Don't do this. That's my real-life experience in a real fourplex in Sharp Park. Thank you.
Robert Sapika, Marie Favarini, and Ben Franzes.
Hello, council members. Robert Sapika, I'm a property owner in Pacifica. I own a four-unit building. I appreciate what you're attempting to do on behalf of all of the tenants in Pacifica. I rented for many years myself, so I do understand what, you know, what you're trying to do in keeping the rents affordable. However, I'd like to say that I oppose rent control for a variety of reasons. The biggest, it doesn't work. It's not going to create more living units for people to rent. It's going to discourage that. I'd like to say that I've owned this building for some years, and I've tried to keep the rents as low as I possibly can, and I have done that, drastically below the market rate. However, I never intended, and it was never my intention, to keep the units renting below-market forever. And so now I'm faced with that. I have to, I have to be able to pay for, you know, a roof. I have to pay $25,000 for a roof or whatever it comes to. I got to be able to get that money from somewhere. So I need to be able to bring the rents up to where I can afford to do that, and I have to have some appreciation on top of that for the investment that I have. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Marie Favarini, Ben Franzes, Christine Stahl.
Hi, my name is Marie Favarini. I've been a renter in Pacifica for more than seven years. My husband's going to speak in a minute about our rent increase that we received today. That was actually our landlord who just spoke. We received a 24.75% rent increase today. We had another rent increase in February, so that's six months. It takes effect in July. We are contributing members of this community. We volunteer at the Pacifica Community Gardens, which donates money to, excuse me, that donates produce to homeless people. We support local businesses like Columbo's Deli, for example. We're members of the Coastside Jewish Community. I'm a part-time teacher. I help students learn to read. I also teach English as a second language to second language speakers here in Pacifica. I just also would like to say that the just cause portion of the ordinance is very important. It protects good, law-abiding renters from being unfairly evicted. The example about the gang members and drug dealers being convicted of crimes, that would be just cause for eviction. So I really want to make a distinction that this ordinance would stop evictions that were for no just cause, not evictions that are for just cause. And I've noticed that some of the people are wearing these stickers that say, "Save the Dream." And I just want to say that renters of Pacifica have a dream too. We dream of being treated fairly and staying in the community that we love. So please vote for the moratorium. Thank you.
Ben Franzes, Christine Stahl, David Rosenheim.
Hi, I'm Ben Franzel. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. It's hard to read. So, yeah, you just heard from my wife. I hadn't prepared to speak tonight, but it did take on more urgency when I came home tonight and did receive, as my wife mentioned, $515 rent increase. And this is on the heels of an increase that went into effect in February. So I want to mention our situation because I think it's a good illustration of what's going on in Pacifica. That was a not-quite-10% increase. So if our household income went up 35% every five months, that would be great, but it doesn't. And we're in the same situation as a lot of other people where something has really got to give. It is getting harder for us to stay here. It's getting harder for a lot of people to stay here. We love being part of this community. We love contributing. And we feel like we've really put down roots here, but it's not going to be possible to stay. And I feel like the more there's this kind of unhinged, uncontrolled rent increases and speculation from investors, the harder it is to hold a community together. And so I just want to give our example as something that illustrates a bigger pattern, and I hope that the city council will take that to heart. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Christine Stahl, David Rosenheim, and Carlos Davidson.
Good evening, all. I don't think I can really say anything that hasn't already been said. But I do have a couple of questions that come to mind, and one of them is the money. Where is the money going to come from with the substantial administrative costs? A couple of other questions. Since we do have a shortage of housing, I am a proponent of affordable housing, having that available here. As the gentleman said, 60 people for one apartment. I just wonder where those people, other people went to live. So a few questions do come to mind. Will rent control create additional rental units in Pacifica who need an affordable place to live? Will rent control lead to lower-priced rental units, apartments in Pacifica? Will rent control automatically open up or make available a medium-priced apartment rental? Will poorer families, poorer families are at a disadvantage in a rent-controlled situation because if a landlord has a chance to rent to someone with a medium or higher income, they're not going to rent to someone who is poor. So we need affordable housing for those that are the schoolteachers, the hairdressers, the grocery store attendant, the gas station attendant, the gardeners. We do need more affordable housing for them. Rent control is not the answer to a long-term shortage of affordable housing for the next generation and the generation after that. Thank you very much.
David Rosenheim, Carlos Davidson, and Haley Fisk. And Haley's card is the last one I have. David Rosenheim? Carlos Davidson? Okay. Haley Fisk?
This is the first council meeting. My name's Haley Fisk. I live in, I'm on Corona, and I have a home on Fassler, and I know that I'm exempt. But I just want to tell you guys that as a landlord, the government and the banks make more than I do, and my return is about 1.4, 1.5% on my investment. And so I can make more money if I put it in a stock that was paying, you know, 3% dividend. And, you know, money, like water, follows the simplest path, and the simplest path is, you know, and you can see what happened to these landlords. You made them afraid because they know the rents are going to be controlled, so they immediately raise the rent. And as an investor, you know, it's not about good or bad or evil. It's about putting your money to work where you're going to get the best return. And I personally am afraid that I have this investment that may be encumbered, and I will likely turn my property and go someplace else with a higher cap rate, or go someplace else, put it into some other investment, trade it up. But definitely, I won't, you know, if it passes, just out of fear, I won't, I won't have a rental property here. It's just not worth my time. You guys make more. The banks make more. So thanks for your time.
Lily Wu. Lily's the last card I have.
Hi, yes, I'm Lily Wu, and I want to talk about my own experience and my parents'.
Can you speak closer to them?
Sorry, yes. Okay, I wanted to bring up a few examples because I am against the moratorium. I'm against rent control. There's good reasons for that because it actually creates more trouble. So people say, oh, rent control, they think, oh, it's good. It's protecting. It's not. It's giving people an avenue to be crooked and be greedy on the other side. So for example, I have, I know somebody just in the city, and it's actually the tenant. It's a friend of a friend. They just got paid off for moving out $115,000. And that's because the owner let them stay there. Really low rent because they were, you know, good people, good landlord, and, but they bought the property a while back, and they wanted to let them stay there. But then what happens, they became the victim, and they had to sell it because the rent is too low. Everything goes up, and they couldn't raise the rent. They couldn't move them out, no just eviction. So they worked it out with the attorney, paid them off, $100 and something thousand. I know in San Francisco, rent control creates that atmosphere. People can go in and try to take advantage of landlords. Okay, now, does that make more rental for future, or does that control the rent? It doesn't because what happened is the person that takes the property or that owner paid them off, then they're going to jack up the rent because you know why? If they don't bring it up to market value, they're going to be at a loss again. So that happens. My parents own property in the city, rent control. They're the nicest landlord. They lowered the rent because the couple that was living there, the wife passed away, lowered the rent, so it's lower. But guess what? Rent control came in. When they bought it, there's no rent control. Rent control came in. They still were nice people. They didn't want to raise rent. They kept it, you know, okay, whatever amount, they didn't even raise it. But guess what? The tenant took advantage.
Your time is up.
Okay, so I'll just say, they sold the property and left. Don't want to touch San Francisco because rent. So I just ask one question.
Your time is up.
Just one question. The people that said the rent-
Sorry. I shut the microphone off. Thank you. Okay, these are just people that didn't answer. Carlos Davidson, David Rosenheim, Mary Bona, Susan Arms, Daniel Saver. Carlos Davidson, David Rosenheim, Mary Bona, Susan Arms, Danielle Saver. Okay, they're not here. So is there any other yellow cards? Okay, close the public hearing, turn it back to council. Any comments from council? Deirdre?
So there are two things that are not on the agenda tonight that I would like to agendize. One comes up from all the things that I've heard tonight and also all the emails and all the phone calls that I've received. And that is, I would like to suggest that the council agendize an urgency ordinance for our May 8th discussion. And in that ordinance, I'd like to include verbiage that would, I would like to discuss that any rent that has not gone into effect yet be eliminated, any rent increase. So the other item is that we would push pause on the rent stabilization committee. I think that with all the discussions, we're wasting people's time, and I certainly don't want to do that. So is there any discussion? Is there any support by council to agendize an urgency ordinance for May 8th?
I think Sue has seconded it. Right? Yeah, Sue has seconded it for the May 8th agenda. And are you done?
Mm-hmm.
Sue Varelas? Okay. You got your light.
I want to speak on the item.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, yeah, oh, sorry. I will also speak on the item when you're done.
Okay. I think it's horrible that people got huge rent increases. I asked, I got hundreds of letters by email, and I asked everyone who said that they had a rent increase if they thought it was because of rent control. Everyone said yes. Everyone said, "It's because of rent control that I got huge increases." The landlords are afraid. And look what happened. It backfired. This is a consequence of talking about rent control. The numbers of letters that I got were overwhelmingly against rent control. At every meeting that we've had, it's almost always the majority are against rent control. And people don't listen to that because the majority has always been against it. A couple, council voted for a rent advisory. What happened to the rent advisory? They didn't follow through. The rent advisory might have worked here because it tells people, "Please don't raise your rents," and "Please give lots of notice to people." It's important that we should have gone on with that and let, and let that try to take effect. And then these rent increases wouldn't have happened. It limits the amounts. And we're taking from one person to give to another. That's been said over and over. Do you ask the grocery store to give back money? Do you ask the gas stations to give back money? No, but you're taking from one to give another. One of the questions I had was, "What alternatives are there?" The rent advisory is one. We could pass a tax that would go for affordable housing. We don't have any right now, but it could go towards the people who actually need it. So we could administer something with maybe one person, one administrator, to administer a fund that would go towards people who actually need help with their rents. In San Francisco, you see it all the time where someone's renting for $800, and they Airbnb the property and make $30,000 a month. Where's the greed? The greed goes both ways. And I think the cost to administer this is huge. It's going to be a problem for Pacifica because we have to come up with it in the beginning. You have to wait to collect it from everyone. That takes three employees to administer this program, and that's a lot of money every year to spend. One person said that this doesn't affect any small landlords. Of course, it affects the small landlords. It's based on two units or more. And a lot of the, even the larger, even the larger units are often owned by mom and pops that are using this for their retirement. What happens to them? I had a bathroom, I put a bathroom in. I have a single-family rental that, by the way, the person's paying way under-market rent because I like them, and that's the way it should be. I put a bathroom in there. It costs $5,000. I just asked the person who put in the bathroom if he could put in another bathroom. He said, "It's $15,000 now." So to say that the costs don't go up is ludicrous because the costs are way up. And I have to absorb that cost. Thank you.
Okay.
Quiet, please. Quiet! Quiet! Quiet, please. Please respect everybody's opinion, whether you agree or disagree. Please, no applause, boo, or clapping.
So since we're sharing experiences, I was, I've actually a renter almost my entire adult life. As a matter of fact, I see my last landlord here. Sorry I didn't give you a call back, Brandon. You can see I've been a little busy, but I'll call you this week. And I married into being a landlord now. We own three properties and recently had to evict someone. So I see both sides. I really do see both sides, and I think that is very important for everyone to understand that I'm listening and also experiencing both sides of this. And it was important for me to be a very good tenant. And I think that what you'll see in the ballot measure is that it is important in that ballot measure that we are requesting tenants to be good tenants. And we are also asking landlords to be good landlords. Money is not the root of all evil. Greed is, Elvis Presley says. But, so I also agree that affordable housing is very important here, but that's not what we're talking about. It's a separate related issue. Do I support it? Yes. It's not what we're talking about, so I will not talk about it. This issue's been studied by council and the city since December 2015, probably earlier. It's not new. So anybody who's owned a property or been a rental, a tenant, should have been following this. And I apologize, but shame on you if you have not. It is such a priority that council and the show of the public made this our top goal for 2017. People have been saying, "Where is this coming from?" It's coming from somewhere. So it's important that we understand that this is not about realtors. It's not about them versus us. It's actually about our community. It's about us. So when I hear the "us" versus "them," and, you know, somebody stood up and said, you know, "I'm friends, tenants and landlords alike should remain friends." That's up to you. That's up to you. It's not up to this moratorium. It's not up to rent stabilization. It's, that's up to you as a human being, as a part of this community, to remain friends. It's about longtime residents who volunteer at the Pacifica Resource Center, having to leave his home because of rent increases. What would our community be like without those people, the fabric of our community? So I do support a fair return for our landlords and believe that the ordinance drafted allows for the continued fair return. Please read the ordinance. Please, please educate yourself. Educate your neighbors. Landlords, we want you to have good renters, and we want you to do well. Renters, we want you to have good relationships with your landlord and to not live in fear. I believe that there's enough support and there's enough opposition and that we need to follow the democratic process and let the people vote. I hear things like, "Keep Pacifica safe," and "Making people afraid." And it's about education. It's about community. And remember, this is up to you. This is up to you. That's it. Thanks.
Okay, it's quarter to 11:00, and the council has a policy that we will vote to whether or not we want to continue past 11:00. And we also vote on a time definite that the meeting will be finished. So someone needs to make a motion for a time. City manager, do we know how long the budget presentation is?
The staff presentation itself will be no more than five minutes.
Five minutes? Okay. So I, John?
Do you think 12 o'clock would be enough? 12:30? Maybe 12:30 to be safe? I mean, it doesn't hurt. Yeah. Okay, so I'll move that we extend our time to 12:30.
I'll second.
Okay, vote. So the motion to extend to 12:30 passes. So what that means is we're going to continue our conversation about this item, go to the budget session, and, but the meeting will end, if we're in the middle of it or whatever, at 12:30. So, John, your turn.
Yeah. About the urgency ordinance, so do you intend that it would be the same as the interim ordinance only to take effect if it passed immediately?
Yes, and that there would be a stipulation that it, and that those that would, that were alerted in the last, since February 18th, or what's the date? 13?
13, 14.
Because their rent increase is not going to affect, that they would be invalid. That, that's what the urgency ordinance, an urgency ordinance, could potentially say.
Okay. Well, so two weeks ago, we passed the interim ordinance, and it was a three-to-two vote. An urgency ordinance requires four votes. I will support your motion or your--
Motion to agendize.
Motion to agendize, yeah, okay. But I want to make it clear that I don't hold out much hope. And I think we will probably be able to do that pretty quickly. But on the other hand, the initiative ordinance requires only three votes to pass, and that will be considered at the same meeting and hold out a little bit more hope for that. Okay, thank you.
Sue Varelas?
No, I'm finished.
Sue, do you agree?
So question, if we're agendizing the proposal, the motion, then how does that affect the present?
Well, we would have to draft language into the urgency ordinance such that if it were adopted and go into effect, then this interim ordinance that you're adopting tonight would then be rescinded.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. So as was mentioned, this whole topic has been going on since at least 2015. And we had a house full of SAMCAR representatives and speakers, representative speakers, attorneys. We also then had two or three public meetings for listening outside of that and requested at that time that the attorneys for SAMCAR and CAA and for the renters speak with the city staff and anybody else. But people did speak at all those meetings, public, those are public hearings. And in the meantime, it looks like some of the information you're, we are receiving in our mailboxes are indicating pretty extreme issues rather than looking to creating, as is, agendize or the goal proposed is Pacifica's community preservation. It's been very clear since 2015, both those working to help the fair rents and for the council members such as myself, that the goal was very clearly twofold. One was to make sure that Pacifica landlords were heard, were listened to, and were protected. At the same time, that the present renters in Pacifica were also heard and protected. Now, that has become rather messy and convoluted, unfortunately. It seems to me in the last couple of weeks that landlords have become extremely, extremely afraid. It's matching the fear that renters have had. So it puzzles me that even still, looking at the ordinance specifics and listening to the mission and the goal of council to protect both sides just is not coming across. This is extremely frustrating. This has been a lot of time, a lot of "please, help out," and we seem to be getting more and more to misinformation and fear. And instead of being able to become more and more and act like a community, we are seemingly pitting each other against desperation. This side's desperate, that side's desperate. So I'm in favor of the urgency for that reason, is to try to quell some of this. And as Councilmember Martin said, urging all of you to look at the details. Look at the details. I'm very proud of this community, the grassroots of this community, for looking at the goal and looking across to the other side on the part of the renters and the property owners, who aren't landlords, but property owners, who are looking to the other side to say, "Yes, property owner, that you are a landlord. We get it. We're not trying to hurt you. We're actually trying to help you." You talk about getting rid of those bad tenants. We all want that to happen. The renters want it. The neighborhoods want it. And renters, you have been understanding that you do need to be a good renter, and you appreciate fellow good renters. And you don't want bad renters. So I appreciate that side spending time and time and time and energy and generosity in trying to make that unity. So I'm urging everybody else who may have not looked at the details of how it could be possible to help the landlords to please avoid a knee-jerk reaction. This is not San Francisco. We're not trying to be San Francisco. We're not anybody else. We are who we are. And I repeat, our goal in Pacifica, from the council to you, the community, we feel you really are on board with this, but we are, communication seems to be lacking, is that, yes, landlord, we care about you. Your fair return on investment, your right to have your rights, your right to get rid of bad tenants without having to go broke, your right not to have a tenant in there forever at the $2 rate. I think we're very sensitive to that. So please put aside your fears to look and see and scrutinize to see. Maybe we haven't reached all those checkoff points. We're here to listen. We've been trying to listen. Renters, I can see your fear, and you are not alone. Your community has your back, I'm sure. So that would be, so yes, I am in favor of trying for an urgency for those reasons. But regardless, look at the ordinance to see. And if you feel we still fail, then that's what you feel.
John?
I'd like to make a motion.
Sure.
Okay. I move to adopt the ordinance number whatever. An interim ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pacifica establishing a temporary moratorium on certain residential rent increases in the City of Pacifica and requiring just cause for tenant evictions within the city.
So question, I thought we had a motion, but--
Need to make a motion.
I thought we had a motion.
Somebody wants to second it for discussion?
I'm asking what happened to the first motion.
Okay, what motion did you think we were having?
I thought Deirdre made a-- I thought Deirdre made a motion.
That was to agenda. No, no, we couldn't do that because it's not on the agenda. She made a motion to put it on the agenda for the next meeting for urgency.
Did we vote on that yet?
We can't vote on that because it isn't on the agenda.
We can vote on putting it on the agenda, right?
And it had three votes.
Right.
It was...
Yeah, it's on the agenda.
Are we clear? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
You just seconded John's...
That's fine.
No, Deirdre did.
I seconded.
I was just asking a question.
I just had a couple of questions I wanted to ask the city attorney. Given the high level of interest in the public, when is it possible for you to get the actual ordinances for next the next meeting, May 8th, both the urgency one and the other one out sooner than with the standard agenda? It's just a lot of people want to read them, including us.
Right, yeah, I would say that the earliest would be Wednesday, the 3rd.
Wednesday, the 3rd, okay.
That would be pretty good.
Yeah, that would be...
So then it would be safe to ask people to...
It would be, the 4th would be probably more realistic.
Okay, so we should be able to have both ordinances on our website by May?
We'll do it on our website, all social media, we'll put it on Connect with Pacifica, which goes out the next day on Friday. We'll do everything we can to be proactive in making it available.
Okay, so May 4th then, and are do we have a separate heading there for rent control or do we just put it under the council agenda?
We'll talk about it in the House, we'll let you know what we're planning on doing.
You'll let us know, May 8th?
Probably let you know before the end of this week. I presume that you'll put on the front page of the website how to find it. I mean, I know you're pretty sensitive to that sort of thing, so... Yeah, hopefully the equivalent of above the fold. Yeah.
Okay, okay, so any comments or questions?
So in other words, you're advocating that we market the fact that it's going to be on the agenda and that it's out early. Am I getting that correct?
Right, we basically just told the public that we're going to have try to have it out May 4th. It will be both the urgency and the the potential of November ballot, right? And it'll be on our website, May 4th. Okay, thank you. So any comments or questions and time to vote? And that motion passes three, three to two. And moving on to the next agenda item.
I have still one more thing that was not considered, pushing pause, putting that on the agenda for the rents, the rent stabilization committee, just think for them to keep meeting, can we agendize that? Does anybody support that?
Can we vote on that or...
Well, no, if she wants, she's, she's, Councilmember Martin has made a request that she wants to agendize that for a future meeting. If there's no deliberation, that's what staff will do.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so moving on to the next item, can I get my glasses? Item number was number seven, I guess it's now nine, proposed 2017-18 general fund budget.
Should we wait till it goes on leaves?
I give them time.
Okay, we'll just hold off for a minute.
Number seven.
Five minutes?
I thought you gave it to us.
Get this.
Okay.
Do the urgency ordinance.
Got it.
Would number seven be what?
This is general, it's the budget one.
Page 99, 100.
Thank you. 99. So much coffee.
What?
We actually have a food yellow card?
Hi, man. Oh, yeah, I've got no control. My powers are really... Just got a haircut, I have no more powers.
Yeah, I know, but it was like, and it was both sides too, so it's kind of, I'm just saying, a couple of people put in more than one card. Okay, we need to continue, excuse me, can, we need to continue the meeting, we would like to, so can any discussions please move out to the parking lot? Thank you. Okay. We know who you are, Lorenzo.
I was going to say that.
Good morning, or good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the illustrious Pacifica City Council, my name is Lorenzo Heinz, I'm your Assistant City Manager, and I'm here to present to you the 2017-2018 proposed general fund budget. You can also find some of this information or this information in your packet as well. But let's, we'll just go through the PowerPoint presentation. And so we have a balanced budget for 2017-18 at $31,129,000. And as I mentioned, the revenues are balanced and with the expenditures. Themes used in this budget development is what we paid keen attention to cost recovery and make sure that we followed all the cost recovery principles and measures that we've always had in place. Annual expenses will be less than or equal to annual revenues and we're so we're living within our means, one-time monies are being used for one-time expenses. Our budget timeline, April 18th, last week, we had a long-term financial plan presented to the council. We have fees and charges that were also presented to the council. April 24th, today, we're going to talk about the general fund budget for 1718. May 2nd, we have a budget study session planned and we're going to talk about Public Works and we're going to talk about both sides of Public Works, the wastewater treatment side and the engineering and field services side. We're also going to have a discussion of other funds because Public Works relies quite a bit on the other funds and so it's a good time to tie that in. In case for our listeners at home, we have 26 total funds, so the general fund just represents one of those 26. It just happens to be the biggest of the 26. May 16th, we have department presentations continue, we're focusing on public safety and planning. Now, May 16th, when we talk about public safety, we're talking about half of our expenditure budget, so May 16th is a big night. We're also going to talk about the capital budget. May 18th, we're going to talk about general government, that's the city manager's office and the various other offices under the city manager, and parks, beaches, and recreation. May 22nd, we intend to hold public hearings for the budget, CIP, and fees and charges. We'll also do our final presentation for the 2017-18 operating budget on May 22nd. We'll also do a resolution establishing appropriation limit for the 1718 fiscal year and then we will come back to you at the end of June for the, hopefully, the adoption of the 1718 annual budget. Lorenzo will not be here on June the 12th and that's why we have a gap there. He's got a daughter graduating from high school and so he needs to be there.
Who's Lorenzo?
It's late.
I do have to tell you, Lorenzo, you know how to clear a room.
Yeah. There is, there is nothing like an accountant talking numbers to clear a room, yeah. It's like getting, the only thing, the only worst thing I can think of is the engineers. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Clearly Director Ocampo has some some issue with that. So on the revenue side, the things that we, sort of the things that we saw last week when we were looking at the long-term financial plans, the revenues are flattening, but they're still ticking upwards, but they're flattening out, so we've reflected that in our revenue estimates for 2017-18. We are increasing departmental revenues to reflect cost recovery measures. We've also continued the policy of excluding the ERAF funds from the general fund budget and we've increased various fees and charges to reflect our cost recovery principles. Over on the expense side, one thing that you'll see is that $130,000 in funding has been added to the budget for general government, primarily in the city manager, city clerk's budget item, and this is to address three potential ballot initiatives, so I was anticipating that based on the discussions that I'm hearing council talk about, that we're looking at ballot measures for marijuana use and sales, rent control, and Highway 1 policy. So those were built in, just with the contingency that these things, these measures cost every time we put that, put the ballot in front of our citizenry. Public Works, we've got a bit of a policy change with Public Works. Public Works has staff that was primarily supported by other funds and so we had positions actually being funded out of other funds. And so what we want to do is pull those positions out of those other funds, put them in the general fund, and then when they do work for those other funds, the general fund will essentially issue a bill to those other funds and you'll see those in the transfer in lines. This allows us to keep all the staff in one place. There's still a couple more outliers out there and we'll get those folks next year, but for right now, we're slowly bringing Public Works and their entire staff back into the general fund. And so you'll see a big bump in Public Works's expenditure budget, but you'll also see a big bump in our transfers in to reflect the transfers from those other funds to take care of those expenditures. So it's a net zero. Transfers out, the pension obligation loan that had existed between the general fund and the wastewater enterprise fund is now reversed. And that in the past few years, the loan has been coming from the wastewater enterprise fund into the general fund and now this year, 1718, the general fund starts to repay that loan. And so the first payment is $171,000 and that has been scheduled for this year. Salaries and benefits include the changes in personnel costs reflected in the bargaining agreements and the personal costs are projected to increase for all employees and we've got pension rate issues or not issues but increases and all of those things have been included in the budget. As far as what we look like from a graphic point of view, the revenues, our department program expenditures, and our property taxes are still vying for the biggest piece of the pie. I am still, as your sort of fiscal officer, still looking out, looking for ways to increase those other taxes, those transient occupancy taxes and those sales taxes because it's great that we have two pieces of that pie that are prominent, but I would love to have the other pieces a little more prominent as well. On the expense side, our city looks like every other city, public safety is the expense that dominates the general fund pie. As you can see, it's about 50% between fire and police. You'll see the bump in Public Works, Public Works was about 2.8 million last year and you can see it coming in at 3.3, but again, that extra budget authority is offset by transfers in from other funds. Parks, beaches, and recreation, we'll talk about, we'll talk about all of these departments when they do their individual presentations and we'll allow you to get into the sort of the detail of the changes in those budgets. And that's my presentation. Now, the beauty of the budget study sessions is that we will come back to you and essentially on a, I think, a more reasonable basis, provide information about each department in what I hope is a slow, methodical way to make sure that everybody understands exactly what's going on with each department's budget. It also gives you an opportunity to question me and also question the department director and/or his or her staff about what's going on in those departments.
Okay, oh, there are questions. I don't know who was first, Sue Vatalas?
I'll be quick. On the general government, economic development took a drastic drop.
Right.
And finance went up. Can you explain why that drastic drop?
Finance went up because apparently there's some, and I'll have to get more information, but apparently we've been tasked with a bill, about $57,000 a year, that we have to pay to, I believe, a housing authority of some sort. I was just informed of this with my, by my financial services manager as we were closing the budget gap. I will have more information for that when we, when we come before you. As far as the economic development, that $130,000 for elections had to come from somewhere. Okay. We are, you know, I know you and Councilmember Martin are new, but you're both fully aware that we, when it comes to resources, we're at the point now where we don't have a whole lot of flexibility. And so when we have new expenditures that, that we haven't planned for, the first question is what do we sacrifice to make that happen? And so you just saw a perfect example of it, okay?
Deirdre?
That wasn't me.
Oh.
Oh, maybe my arm hit.
Yeah, you might have hit it. Okay, any other questions for council?
Is there any possibility that the print, like on the pie, could be a little bigger?
Sure.
Thank you.
Do we need to vote on that? No. Okay.
I'll make a motion, oh.
No, we have two cards for the public, yeah, you're going to make a motion. Okay. All right, I have two cards, so open the public hearing. Tree Stier and then Tiger. Is Tree still here?
Yes, she is.
Okay, you're behind the podium, Tree, I couldn't see you.
I just want the public to know that I was number seven on the consideration calendar and you've been very inconsiderate for letting me stay till this time when everybody is gone with only a few people in the audience here. But I want to tell you something, that your lack of transparency and ignorance, because I don't think any of you know what's going on with the budget or anything else, how dare you mortgage the police station and the community center and the Fairmount West Park and the Public Works building and call it the Certificates of Participation? So under public records, I asked a simple question, how much did we borrow on those bonds in the beginning and how much do we own now? Because one of the planning commissions told me $27 million. I haven't got a straight answer and that should be a straight figure, if he can come up with a straight figure, I would think Mr. Heinz or anybody else could come up with a state. But Mr. Heinz has promised me over a month ago to give me the following information under the Certificates of Participation. They have a board of directors, but it doesn't name who they are, doesn't name when they meet and if it's an open, open meeting. I want those answers and I'll get them under public records tomorrow. So thank you very much, Mr. Heinz, for being so, you know, considerate, okay? And I think what we need is a state audit because I think somebody's cooking the books and I think I appeal to all the public to be here on the May 10th to defy the sewer tax because we're paying it more than once, not only through our property taxes, but through these bonds that they're borrowing from, which is illegal.
Tiger?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I desperately wish to crack some sort of joke, but nothing's occurring to me at this late at night because the tension over the last few hours has been ridiculous. Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to say that as somebody regularly seeing the work the Pacifica Resource Center is doing to stabilize the economic security of those living in our town, it would be very kind of our city to make sure the generous support the city contributes to the PRC would also be secure by putting the PRC back into the general budget. What I've spoken about regularly for at least the last couple of years. Ever since the emergencies that hit us with the weather and the buildings falling almost into the sea and people having to evacuate, Pacifica's Gaza states and certainly the commotions going on in town these days, it seems like security is more necessary than ever. ever for the most vulnerable living in town. And, you know, if somebody needs to make sure they can pay rent next month, the PRC is the first place that I would hope they would go, because they're certainly the place that will allow them to be able to do that with some urgency and immediacy and for, you know, whatever happens to come through. And also finding their way to a new residence as needed, and, you know, any resource that somebody needs, the Resource Center is the place to go. They consistently and constantly serve this town, and it would be good if they don't, do not have to worry about year after year whether or not... And by the way, the city council has always been generous and wonderful in making sure that the Pacifica Resource Center is funded. That's not the issue from my mind. It's just a matter of making sure that it's definitely there. They are definitely stabilized. They do not have to worry at all about whether or not that money's going to be there. Because lately, it's been coming from ERAF, and lately, ERAF has been there to do it, and those guarantees have been there within that context. But it would be very cool if the PRC doesn't have to worry about whether or not ERAF is going to continue to be there in subsequent years. One-time money for one-time use. It would be nice if our safety net was securely in place. And so I'm asking that it be put back into the general budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else have public comments? Michael? Okay. Bring it back to council. Sue DeGruy?
Oh, no, I didn't have anything. That was my last one.
Okay, this is not an action item. I believe it was information, so...
Information only.
Yeah, does anybody have any other comments? Motion to adjourn?
Thank you. Can we adjourn in honor of...
Teresa. Teresa.
Her name was Teresa. Okay, we adjourn the meeting in honor of Teresa Mullin, mother of our Assemblyman Kevin Mullin, and our former, wife of our former Assemblyman Jean Mullin.
Thank you.
Okay, meeting adjourned.
Were you able to go to the table?
Kathy?
No.
Did you get the rest of these cards? Okay. I was going to say, John took them.
I don't know, it was a weekday, I think it was.
I'm just funning with you. The other cards are all missing. It was just these.
Wait. No. What day?
18. Whoever dated that.
No, I could not go. I've been to lots of funerals lately.
Yes, there's been a rush.
And I, I didn't know his mother.
I know so much kids.
I'm sorry. Um, wait, this sounds... I saw him like five times at all the events.
Take those cards, Mike.
He goes, I see you way more than I see you.
That was a fake one.
It was.
Yeah, you did. Real good.
Yeah.
You know what? I bet Mr. Higgins is letting you ride on Inverness. He's only letting Dan Stein.
Right on Inverness?
There's an issue with the guy who lives on Inverness.
He doesn't like the... What?
Eleven, eleven of his cars have been crushed.
Inverness is a basket. It's very loud.
They're an artist, yeah.
Cars go everywhere.